No, no, they're just stickers, sorry.
Please be seated. We're going to start the call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff, not here yet. Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Daly?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity for all. All right, let me move to our agenda summation. We will have approval of minutes. Then we will move to reports. First, reports from council members, then a report from the mayor's administration. Tonight, we will have the annual tax abatement and economic development commission report. Then we will have reports from council committees, and then we will have the first period of public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions, if there are any, and then legislation for first readings. Here we have ordinance 2024-15, amending ordinance 23-25, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ask-me employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington for 2024 regarding to add a position requested by the city council to the clerk's office and to replace the existing 12-grade pay structure for non-union employees with an expanded 14-grade pay structure. And the next item for first reading will be ordinance 2024-16, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding limits on debate. Then we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions. Here we have ordinance 2024-14, to amend Title VII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Animals. Resolution 2024-13, authorizing the allocations of the Jack Hopkins Social Service Program funds for 2024, and resolution 2024-14, to protect individuals seeking gender-affirming care. Then we will have an additional period of public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We will have a discussion of council schedule and a proposal to change some upcoming council meetings, and then we will adjourn. Can move ahead with minutes?
Before we do that, Mr. Lucas pointed out to me that in the revised copy of the agenda that was sent out reflecting ordinance 2024-13 that we approved last week, the note about public comment rules was not changed, but that ordinance was returned to council by the mayor today, signed, which is why first readings are before second readings. But also, public comment speakers during the general public comment under reports and at the end of the meeting for additional public comments about items not on the agenda will have three minutes. And then there were revised rules about that as well that got passed last week, so.
Yes, thank you. And I believe the guidelines for public comment are available at the clerk's desk. Is that correct?
They're also at the podium and outside the room by the doors.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I will move to suspend the rules to consider the minutes listed in the ordinary course of business.
All right. We need to suspend the rules because these minutes are from the previous council term, so some of us weren't here. All in favor of suspending the rules in order to consider these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2023.
Second.
All right. And I would just comment that I did email the clerk with just a couple of small changes, which were emailed out just a few minutes ago, but they were not substantive changes, and they have been made. So any other questions or comments about the minutes? All right. Can we do a voice vote on this? Yes. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Thank you. Next, we will go to reports from council members, and I will start on my left with councilmember Daly.
Yes, thank you. I just have more of a comment than a actual report. I want to share a content warning for this evening. We are going to be talking about gender-affirming care and creating safe spaces in Bloomington. That should not require a content warning in and of itself. However, some of you may remember from not too terribly long ago here in chambers, we did have some very ugly public comments, and we don't know what to expect for tonight. Sometimes when topics get very emotionally charged, we may see this happen again. So I want to just remind everybody, or bring to everybody's attention who may not know, that as a body, we cannot stop people from speaking, we cannot shut off their microphone, we cannot go against their First Amendment rights. We have to let them speak, no matter how much we dislike what they might be saying. That does not mean that we don't have to respond, though. I'm very hopeful that that's not going to be the case tonight, that we don't have any incident like we've had recently here. However, if it is, I'm going to once again say that I will be turning my back on a speaker who is using such language and making everybody upset. And also, we do also have the right to pause and give our own reactions. So I just want to remind everybody that if you don't see us stopping people, that is why. We just can't, and I'm really hoping that it does not require this content warning that I've given tonight. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, yes, thank you. I have a report tonight, also a comment, just a comment on a little bit about Historic Preservation Commission, I think, and an experience I had today. So I am the council representative for the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association. I love it. If you don't know it, it's a zone in the downtown area, and we provide grants and loans to businesses and people who live in the zone. It's awesome. But we awarded a grant today to Amethyst House to repair 17 windows on their property. That had to go before the Historic Preservation Commission because their building is on Second Street, and it is a historic home. It's actually a designated district all by itself. It's its own district. So the story there is Amethyst House is an awesome nonprofit also in our community, giving outpatient care to folks who need supportive services dealing with drug and alcohol addiction. So in last September 2023, Amethyst House had a report done on their historic windows by IFF. It's an organization that works to strengthen nonprofits in the community, so doing an assessment on these windows. This sounds kind of boring, but there is a point, you know? Two windows are on the first floor, 15 were on the second floor. The building has more windows than this, but they were looking at the windows in the dorm rooms or the rooms where people sleep. So right now, they're kind of quite dangerous. They have storm windows on them. I think 100% of them are non-operational, so they cannot open. They're putted shut, right? So if there is some sort of fire or something, I'm just saying, you can't get in and out of these windows unless you were to break the window. So they went before the Historic Preservation Commission in 2023, and this report said for all 17 windows, they should be replaced. So you get a level of disrepair in a window, one, two, or three. All of these windows were in disrepair at level two. And so the report is very detailed, as in the HPC packet, said to replace all of these windows with the total cost being about $30,000, somewhere between $26,000 and $32,000. Historic Preservation Commission denied that request in 2023. So Amethyst House got a new estimate to repair these windows the way HPC wanted to. So they've been living with these windows since September, knowing they don't open, right? And BUEA just recently gave, granted them $15,000 to do this repair. Repairs don't last that long. New windows last 30,000 years. So the point of this is that I think we have a lot of questions to ask and maybe processes to look at with Historic Preservation. It looks like in this case, it was preservation above all else when we have safety and efficiency for heating and cooling, right, and financial feasibility that were basically ignored when dealing with windows for this nonprofit. So there's a million things on my list to do here at the city, but one of them is to look at HPC and how they do their business. Also, one of the workarounds, they're all single-pane windows, right? So they would be replaced with double-pane windows. One workaround is that they want to have interior storm windows, and they don't even know if that's legal in Bloomington because you cannot easily get in and out of those storm windows. So just a little something that's going on that I would love to look farther into. Thanks.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I do have a short report this evening. First, I want to remind everybody that my constituent meeting for June is this Saturday, the 15th, and it is at 11:00 a.m., and that is in-person only, next door to this room in City Hall in the McCloskey Room. So I invite everybody to come to that, whether you're in District 3 or in another area of the city. There are always lots of things that people might be interested in talking about. We've been talking about budget a lot here recently in terms of council, and if anybody has any comments on budget, I would especially welcome those sorts of comments. And next, I want to talk a little bit about the Plan Commission meeting that was this week. So I'm the representative to the Plan Commission, and the meeting was on Monday evening, and Plan Commission evaluated two petitions, and I think both of those demonstrate areas where the UDO needs some attention, and so I wanted to point that out a little bit. The first was a self-storage facility located on East Morningside Drive, and the area's owned mixed-use medium scale, and so as long as specific use standards are met, then that self-storage facility is essentially a by-right development. And one of the conflicts there is that this facility is then going to be located along a new neighborhood greenway. So it was just completed. It's supposed to be a priority bike-ped network, and it's a self-storage unit that is very auto-centric and car-centric. So those two things, they don't really go together, right? And putting an auto-centric development along a greenway is not consistent with our comprehensive plan, but it was allowed by the UDO, okay? And it was relatively easy. There were no variants needed. There was nothing, no special kind of approval needed for that to happen. Secondly, there was a new subdivision approved, also on the east side off of Morris Pike, and this subdivision is zoned residential District 2, so R2, and the plan has 17 single-family homes on just over five acres of land. So that's not very many homes on a fair amount of land. And the early iterations of that design included paired homes, which would have been a little bit more dense, would have created maybe a little bit more affordability, and that original plan was kind of scrapped due to lot size minimums. Basically, the developer would have had to jump through a whole lot more hoops, do a whole lot more stuff in order to build something that was more affordable, that was a better use of our land resources. And it's disappointing that that developer was unable to build more affordable homes and more dense options without adding those time-consuming processes. So these two things put together for me just sort of highlight the need that we need to make sure that our UDO and our other processes makes it easy for the types of development that we need in the community, like affordable housing, and that complement our city goals, but requires maybe more effort on the developer's side to build things that don't support our comprehensive plan and might actually run counter to our established goals. So that's something that these two cases kind of put together really puts this heightened awareness on, and I know that there has been conversation amongst council members about the UDO and things that might need to change in the UDO to make sure that it matches up better with what Bloomington needs and our long-term planning, and that's what happened at Plan Commission this week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report?
Sure. Just briefly to echo my colleague, Councilmember Stossberg, that I agree that there's lots of things we should be looking at with the UDO, unified development ordinance to tweak and improve that over time. Staff has already gotten in this practice, which is great. They've, on an annual basis, been bringing small and sometimes, you know, slightly less small amendments, not as much substantive, but I think we're getting to the point of having lived with the plan where we should be looking at more substantive amendments. Also, the council itself has directed amendment to the UDO. We infected that and directed the development of a new overlay for the Hopewell District to help address some of the unique characteristics of that district in allowing smaller setbacks, for instance, and eliminating parking minimums because of the massive parking garage there, and also just recognizing that parking minimums are one of the things that drives unaffordability in housing, especially when you're talking about transit-oriented downtown areas. So that's another thing that, you know, probably should change more, in a more widespread fashion in the UDO, and I've been working on that and some other potential changes. And we'll follow up with my colleagues. I think we direct these changes via resolution. So sometime after council recess, I think we should have everybody have a chance to put into a package essentially so that we can be efficient in the administration of this. The changes they would like to see, we can divide the question and vote on them if we need to, and then direct staff sometime later this summer to help prepare and bring through the Plan Commission amendments that address these types of things. So I appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Stossberg, bringing that up, and just wanted to echo those thoughts and share another example of a thing we can improve. Thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, just a quick one. Earlier today, council president Piedmont Smith and I attended the monthly CIB meeting, which stands for Capital Improvement Board, which is the board designated with the responsibility of constructing a new convention center. Some big progress was made in the meeting today with the CIB voting to expand east, so the eastern side will touch the Fourth Street Garage and be very close to the Bloomington Transit Center. They also identified the Weddell Brothers as our construction manager, who is a construction manager based in Bloomington. Next steps include issuing a hotel RFP, beginning schematic designs, and finalizing the contract with Weddell Brothers. Thanks.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. I have a monthly constituent meeting 10:00 a.m. this Saturday, June 15th. You can find the link on the council website, and Councilmember Ruff has been joining me, but I extend an invitation to anybody, but especially at large members whose constituents also attend the meeting. So this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight. Thank you.
All right. And I will just report out from my constituent meeting that I held this past Saturday via Zoom. Some of the concerns that were shared included scooters blocking sidewalks, a large increase in property tax assessments, concern about unhoused folks that have been displaced when encampments have been closed, and a suggestion to have listening sessions at the Shalom Center to hear from people who have been affected. And we talked a little bit about accessory dwelling units, ADUs, known as granny flats, and the problem that if you have a half lot, like there are several in Elm Heights that are very small lots, you often do not have the required space for an ADU. So some folks that might be interested cannot have them. So that's my report. We can go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. We have the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, Jane Cooper-Smith. Welcome to present the annual tax abatement and economic development commission report.
Hi, thank you. I guess I'll just shut my laptop and go from paper. Jane Cooper-Smith from Economic and Sustainable Development. I'm here tonight with my colleagues, Dee De La Rosa, Assistant Director of Small Business Development, and Larry Allen, City Attorney. And together, we'd like to present to you the annual 2023 Annual Abatement Compliance Report for your review. Staff recommends a finding of compliance or substantial compliance for all projects in this report. There is no recommendation to rescind any projects currently receiving tax abatement. However, your review of the presentation this evening would allow for such action if you deem it necessary. The Economic Development Commission, EDC, reviewed and approved this report on June 4th. Next slide, Stephen. When I've given this report in the past, I offer, oh, sorry, I offer background of the abatement program. However, since I gave an overview of the program about a month ago when we met to discuss the urban station tax abatement, I wanted to focus on abatement compliance this year before we dive into specific projects, and then I'll take questions after we get through the presentation. So that means, if we could go to slide seven, Stephen, which starts during the application, or, yeah, this. Okay, during the application and approval process, the bar for compliance is set in two ways. First, the SB1, the Statement of Benefits, sets the baseline for assessed value, employment, and the amount of anticipated capital investment. Second, the Common Council's Designating Resolution sets the requirements for additional evaluative criteria, which can include quality of life, sustainability, affordable housing, or other commitments related to community character. Next slide. The general standards for our tax abatements require creation of a capital investment that we anticipate will grow our tax base in one of the following: creation of full-time permanent living wage jobs, significant increase of wages, or creation of affordable housing units. So the general standards are the broad state-approved budget, and then the evaluative criteria are the narrower standards that we have more control over locally, and those show up in your designations, your designating resolutions. Next slide. Annually, each taxpayer files a CF1, a Compliance Form 1, with the county auditor and city clerk. These forms are due by May 15th. The designating body, which is the common council, has a 45-day window in which to take action on any of the abatements based on those CF1s. So that's always why we're in a bit of a time crunch to execute on this report. ESD is tasked with reporting on compliance and does this in multiple ways. First, we compare SB1 commitments, so those baseline commitments, to CF1 results. So the SB1 is set, the filer files one at the beginning of the abatement application process, and then we compare our results annually to that baseline. Since the CF1 is a state form, it does not address the local commitments we require via the council's Designating Resolutions. The CF1 reports only on AV, capital investment, sorry, assessed value, capital investment, and employment. Therefore, ESD staff also works with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department and directly with the filers to address commitments that fall outside of the CF1 forms. We are particularly grateful for our partnership with HAND, which now includes our abatement program in their workforce and affordable housing monitoring. Once this information is processed, ESD makes a recommendation of compliance, substantial compliance, or non-compliance, to the Economic Development Commission via a report, which the EDC approves or amends, and then forwards to the common council. So that's the report we're considering tonight. The state weighs in on the definition of compliance, but leaves the determination to the Designating Body. Quote, "The Designating Body shall determine whether the property owner has made reasonable efforts to substantially comply with the Statement of Benefits, and whether any failure to substantially comply was caused by factors beyond the control of the property owner." Next slide, please. Common council then reviews the approved EDC report for final action. Council may approve the report as presented. They may approve individual abatements if they wish to make any changes to the findings. And then finally, if you need additional information or wish to consider a finding of non-compliance, you may request a hearing with individual filers. Next slide. Okay. This slide offers an overview of the proposed and actual new investment and assessed value. It allows us to look at the relationship between the capital expenditures and then the resulting increase in AV or assessed value. We seek an increase in AV, among other things, as a result of the program. However, we do not measure compliance by assessed value since the filer does not have direct control over it. Instead, we look at proposed and actual new investments. So the proposed and actual new, the actual new investments are the input, and the increase in AV is an output. So we're really evaluating the inputs. As a result, we do not label assessed value categories as compliant or non-compliant in this presentation. This overview of economic impact shows that our tax abatement program has grown our local tax base via these active abatements by almost $203 million. There would be other abatements that have rolled off by this time that had also contributed to the tax base and would still be contributing to the tax base. When we compare actual versus new investment, we can see that all categories are on or ahead of target, with the exception of commercial personal property. So this category represents, you know, equipment in businesses or manufacturing. This category reflects that Catalent is still in the process of making investments for resolution 22-06. So slide, yeah, that slide. This slide shows that there are 2,406 new and retained jobs as a result of the program, and that the average new and retained salaries are $81,182. This is significant as a comparison. The Bloomington living wage calculated on an annual basis is about $33,000 a year, and Prosperity Indiana's 2023 Bloomington housing wage is $45,000 a year. So 81 is very meaningful for those workers. Next slide. Here, we have an overview of the results of the housing developments related to the abatement program. The city relies on area median income, or AMI, as a result of the, or sorry, as a measure of the level of affordability of housing units. We receive information on the AMI of both the units. So when it's on the unit, it would mean that landlord sets that AMI, and that's the range of acceptable AMI for the resident that comes in. And then we also, thanks to HAND, now receive information on the actual AMI of the specific occupant. So we have two ways of slicing that. This slide averages actual AMIs of the residents of the subsidized units. Union at Crescent has 27 market rates that are not factored into this average because those residents do not have to report on their income. A bit of additional context, Bloomington's vacancy rate is 6%. This represents average market turnover, or churn, as real estate development people like to say, rather than long-term vacancies, of which there are very few in Bloomington. It is anticipated that Bloomington's vacancy rate will increase slightly next year, given the addition of new student housing units. So 6% represents a pretty tight market. Okay. So this is Southern Knoll. We can go ahead to the next slide. Thanks. Southern Knoll is a 31-unit affordable housing complex. Its commitment is for 31 units at or below 80% AMI. 75 of those units, sorry, 75 of total units, or 24 per our resolution, should be at or below 60% AMI. Seven of these units are set aside for permanent supportive housing, and seven are set aside for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. This property is in year four of a 10-year abatement. The filer exceeded investment, met employment and salary requirements, and the increase in assessed value exceeded what was anticipated on the SB1. So if we can go to the next slide. This question came up from a few of you. Thank you for sending me questions in advance. It's super helpful in preparing. So they're compliant on new real estate investment, employment, salaries, AV, units at 80% or less AMI. But then when we get to the bottom line, we can see that in the report I submitted that they had only 23 instead of 24 units at 60% AMI. So I was able to learn that in the filer's, okay, so the report lists that, in the initial resolution, 75% of the units, so 75% of 31 is actually 23.25, but we rounded it up in our resolution to 24 units. However, the filer's commitment to However, the filer's commitment to IHCD, which is the Indiana Housing and Community Development Finance Authority, which handles low-income housing tax credit projects. So their light tech commitment and their resulting deed restriction, they recorded 23 units as their commitment for 60% or below. The property owner explained that they are renting 100% of their units at or below 60, but that it's this difference between how we describe the units and what the AMI of the renters is. So he said these units are tagged so that 23 are 60% and below, and the remaining are 80% and below. Sorry, all 31 are 80% and below, and 23 are tagged as 60% and below. However, in practice, 100% of these units are rented to individuals well below 60% AMI. And in fact, the actual AMI of the property on that previous slide is 23%. So it's super low. The property owner's response conforms to my data from HAND. In my initial report, I relied on the unit category rather than the resident category. And in our documents, based on the resolution, we care about the people, not the category of apartment. So therefore, 31 units are actually at or below 60% AMI. And I recommend, staff recommends, a finding of compliance for this property. So this just means that bottom category, we're switching it from substantially compliant to compliant. Okay. Union at Crescent, you can go to the next one, is a 146 mixed -- 146-unit mixed affordable and market-rate housing development on North Crescent Road. This property is in year five of its abatement. The filer, although the filer significantly exceeded its planned new investment, its increase in assessed value is not quite at the level anticipated on the SB 1. The filer is compliant with its requirements for housing units at or below 60% AMI. Staff recommends, oh, you can go to the next slide. Staff recommends a filing of compliance. The next project is Urban Station. I've included this as an informational slide, but it has already been found compliant. So in the interest of time, I thought perhaps we could move to the next one, which is Woolery Mill Ventures. Woolery Mill Ventures proposed the renovation of an abandoned limestone mill into a mixed-use facility, which is phase one of the abatement. They also proposed the creation of a PUD that would allow for apartments, condos, a hotel, and other amenities on the site. That's phase two. It has not been started. Thanks. This is year five of a 10-year abatement. The filer is substantially compliant with new real estate investment and is compliant with employment commitments. The assessed value has increased substantially. But given that the filer is only receiving benefits on the increase in assessed value, and that the filer has only activated phase one of the abatement, staff recommends a finding of compliance for Woolery Mill. Thanks. And then these represent the most complicated of our tax abatements, or complex, in part because they're layered, bless you. So Catalent has three active abatements, 1506, 1904, and 2204. We will look at the investments individually, and then we'll look at the employment in a combined slide. So next slide, thank you. For 1506, Catalent has exceeded the planned personal property investment. Although the AV lags somewhat behind the anticipated AV, this is year six of that abatement. Next slide, oh, you did it. 1904, the property owner did not file the new, they didn't trigger the new real estate investment layer of the abatement. Therefore, this part of the abatement has not been started. And it shouldn't be included in this assessed value. So since it wasn't triggered, we said did not, DNF is did not file, and then RP assessed value, that should just be zeroed out. We shouldn't be looking at that if we're not considering the impact of an actual investment. The filer exceeded personal property investments, and AV for those exceeds what was anticipated on the SB 1. So that's 1904. And then 2206 is the new one. This overview of the newest abatement shows the activated abatement for personal and real property investments made, beginning in 2022. The filer reached $6,711,600 of real property investments of the up to available $10 million in real property investments. That was a weird sentence, sorry. The Catalent has achieved almost $30 million of an anticipated $340 million investment in personal property on the site. The real property investment is complete. The personal property investment is in progress. The original SB 1 did not include figures for anticipated assessed value. So moving on to employment. Catalent has exceeded employment expectations for abatements 1506 and 1904. Each abatement requires the reporting of current job numbers on individual forms, which is why the current employment figure is used for each abatement. That means this 2,324, we see it in each category because the CF1 form requires them to report on current numbers. So that's why that's recycled in those different places. It is clear that the retention and addition requirement for 1506 and 1904 has been met. And for abatement 2206, we can see that the retained employment figures start below the commitment of 2206. So the CF1 is below the baseline commitment of 2206. Moving on to the next slide. Here, we're looking at new and retained salaries, along with total employment, which paints a clearer picture of employment gains since 2015. And I guess I'm just trying to say, because retained and new are combined, it's a little clearer, and then we can get, track the salary changes over time. Okay. In the next slide, we can maybe get a little more into the weeds. So in addition to meeting the CapEx requirements for the active abatements--
I'm sorry, Ms. Cooper Smith, could you hold on just a moment? If there's no opposition, I would extend this period for another 10 minutes so that we allow Ms. Cooper Smith to finish, and we have time for questions. Is there, is there any, any opposition to that? Okay, go ahead.
I'll try to move fast, thanks. Okay, so they've met the capital expenditure requirements for the active abatements, except for 2206, personal property, which is in process. That's the big one, the $340 million personal property investment. There are two factors that have led to a recommendation of a finding of substantial compliance, well, compliance for the first two, and substantial compliance for the third. And I'm happy to spend as much time on this as is helpful. So the MOA, the Memorandum of Agreement, that we entered into after the council resolution is approved dictates that the filer is not required to meet the new employment targets or investment targets until 2027. So they have through 2025 and 2026 to achieve those target numbers. And then the second factor that I think is important is that the state code allows for, and accounts for economic uncertainty, that is, failure to substantially comply. If there's a determination or the council is considering a failure to comply, it must not be driven by forces outside of the property owner's control. That is, if the property owner is not meeting the targets, it's because they're electing or they're making decisions that lead to them not making the targets, rather than what's happened in this case, which I can talk a little bit about, too. It's that it's market demand that has driven the slower launch of these, these metrics. So Catalent has communicated that, since the abatement was approved in 2022, demand for the COVID-19 vaccine had fallen in a way that could not have been reasonably foreseen by the company, the lack of demand for vaccine production, which was largely the purpose of this expansion. So the lack of demand for vaccine production, accompanied by the reduction in revenue, has hindered Catalent's ability to rapidly ramp up employment the way they had previously anticipated. That said, the company states that it has made or is in the process of making all committed investments, and remains committed, quote, "to growing and expanding the site and its positive impact on the Bloomington community." So with that as the background context, I'll say that staff, given the timeframe to reach full compliance and the factors outside of the company's control, staff recommends a finding of compliance for abatements 1506 and 1904, and substantial compliance for 2206. And then there's just one other project to look at before we can pause and get those questions. Retreat at Switchyard is the property being developed adjacent to Switchyard Park. We're all really excited about it. They're so enthusiastic that they filed a CF1 even though they were not required to. They just wanted to communicate about progress. So they've made, you know, some of their investments, and this building should be leased up this year, right? Dee, what was the start date?
October 24.
October 24. So, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Are there questions for Ms. Cooper Smith? Councilmember Ruff.
Thank you very much for the report and the explanations, especially regarding Catalent's situation. But earlier, you mentioned some of the vacancy data, information related to some of the projects, the residential projects. What I'm wondering is, when we talk about vacancy, is that mostly self-reported? Is there any way to verify a lot of that information? Not just with the abatements, but just in general speaking, generally speaking?
These are self-reported numbers that go to HAND, and it's part of the program that HAND uses to monitor compliance for their other incentives. So I don't think, I don't know, Larry, if you can speak to this, but I don't think the information is triangulated. And I don't know if there's a way to do that, since some of it is, is private. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Satisfactory answer, but that's what I got.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stasburg.
I just have a really fast one, going back to the Southern Knoll property with the 23 out of 24. So based on what you said, it kind of sounds like there's almost like a paperwork glitch. Where, so is our paperwork always going to say 24, and their, like, actual result is always going to be 23? Or is there a way to, like, make ours 23?
I mean, you could, I think you could amend your resolution, but I don't think it's necessary because what I learned in this process is that I should be reporting to you on the actual resident income numbers and not mixing in how the property is advertising the units. So next year, it should, it should be easy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a very basic question. In your assessment, is our tax abatement program successful?
Well, Bloomington has a unique set of challenges, right? We have fewer areas for development than some of our neighboring communities do. So we actually have a smaller tax abatement program than other cities in the state. But when I look in particular at the salary level that is reported in the aggregate job slide, which is that $81,000, that feels really significant to me. I think that I have a, I don't know how to frame this. I don't want to overcommit, but I have a personal desire to make our incentives work together and work a little more deliberately than maybe they have in the past. So, yeah, I guess I'll just set that down there. Well, Indianapolis has, has, I can't remember what it's called. Dee, do you know what that? Yeah, they have like an integrated incentives program that has pretty targeted outcomes that they're working toward. And I think it would be exciting to look at a model like that and try to take steps toward it, rather than having incentives that live in, just in different parts of our city operations.
But overall, do you think that the program has attracted investment that we wouldn't otherwise have not--
Yes, absolutely. I think that it's really essential for the, especially for-profit companies, to have this on the table when they're considering growth and expansion in Bloomington, especially because we allegedly have other development challenges or costs to development here, high costs of land, whatever else. I think it's really essential.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? All right, well, yeah?
I'll move to approve the annual tax abatement report and staff recommendations, if now is the time for that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations on our tax abatements. Can we do a voice vote on this one? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith, and I appreciate the in-depth reporting. I think that's really important. All right, next, we will move to council committees. And I would just say that the Special Committee on Council Processes does have a proposal to change our council schedule, which we will look at when we get to the council schedule portion of our meeting towards the end. There's, the report was sent to you all. It's about scheduling, so I don't think we need to go over it at this time. Are there any other council committees? Okay. We now move to our first period of public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if you're here for an item that is on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. So you will have, if you want to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you'll have up to three minutes. And I would ask you to approach the podium and sign in and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes. Mr. Lucas, could you please make an announcement over Zoom?
Yes, if there are folks joining via Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar by clicking on the reactions button or the more button. And again, if you can't locate that, please send the meeting host a chat message.
All right, do we have anybody in council chambers who would like to give a comment? You can step up to the microphone and sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes. And please state your name for the record.
Concerned citizen. Hey, I've been thinking about this all week. And I want to kind of address the public a little bit on this. You know, if you drive down College Avenue, past Kroger's--
Excuse me, sir, please address your comments to myself as the presiding officer of this meeting.
Okay. Have my time started yet?
Yes.
Where's the timer? Oh, that's cool. Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. You know, I've been driving down College Avenue all week, and I got to say one thing, I respect construction workers, big time, because I used to be, and I got a lot of friends that are in construction. But driving down College Avenue, I don't know, I wish you guys had to, you leave, would drive down through there in the public, would drive down College to First Street. What is that in the road, that utility cut? How is that allowed? I don't know if anybody's drove down through there, but my head about went through my sunroof the other day when I hit that. It's been like that all week. And like I said, these, these construction people need to put signs out there to state who they are that's doing them jobs, so we know who to sue when they tear the front end out of our car. Please drive down College Avenue, past Kroger's, First Street, and hit that thing, and you'll know what I'm talking about. That thing is probably five foot wide and probably four or five inches deep. And you hit that in your car, man, you're going to need an alignment. You know, you're going to need, you're going to need a bat. I'm more worried about women with children, with babies, that drive down the road and hit that. They could go out of control. It's really, it would be real easy to do. But another thing, too, my hat's off to the City of Bloomington Utilities Department over on, let's see, Patterson in front of the Social Security Office. There used to be four or five drains in the middle of the road that they'd repaired four or five times. four or five times on Patterson, right in front of Social Security. And they repaired them so many times, and you about had to avoid them to not tear the front end out of your car. But they had to call the big guns in the other day. They had to call City of Bloomington Utilities to repair that finally. They took the endless up, passed the hose, slick as a gut. Thank you, City of Bloomington Utilities. But my main concern is that thing at First and College. Man, that, that thing's unacceptable, man. Like I said, I respect the construction guys, but that is terrible. And the City of Bloomington gets, they get blamed for that stuff, the hard-working city employees. Someone hits something in the road, it's automatically, oh, the city guys, man, they've got this road, these roads. But that's a construction company that's done that. You guys, when you get, you leave here if you would, and everybody here, drive down through and hit that, tell me what you think about it, okay? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to give a public comment?
I'm pressed.
Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will go on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to make tonight? No, we do not, so we will move on to legislation for first reading.
I move that ordinance 2024-15 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024-15 amending ordinance 2023-25, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2024, regarding to add a position requested by the city council to the clerk's office and to replace the existing 12-grade pay grade structure for non-union employees with an expanded 14-grade pay grade structure. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2325, which fixes the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for the year 2024. The amendment reflects the creation of one new position requested by the city council to the clerk's office and also replaces the old 12-grade pay grade structure with an expanded 14-grade pay grade structure.
Thank you. That will be discussed and heard for second reading next week, next Tuesday, the night, the 18th.
I move that ordinance 2024-16 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024-16 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding amending Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.120, limits on debate. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith and would set limits on the number and length of speeches during debate of legislation in order to make council regular session meetings more efficient. It would limit each council member's comment in the first round to three minutes and allow council members a second round of comments limited to one minute each.
And that will also be heard for second reading next Tuesday. We move on to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
I move that ordinance 2024-14 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-14 to amend Title VII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Animals regarding amending Chapter 7.16 Commercial Animal Establishment Permits, Chapter 7.54 Fees, and Chapter 7.56 Enforcement Procedures. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by councilmembers Piedmont, Smith, and Rallo. It comes in the wake of action by the Indiana General Assembly, which has preempted local units from prohibiting the sale of dogs by retail pet shops through passage of House Enrolled Act 1412, which will go into effect July 1, 2024. This ordinance reinstitutes the requirements present in the Bloomington Municipal Code before passage of ordinance 2145, with which pet shops must comply in order to sell dogs. This ordinance updates those requirements in conformity with the newly enacted state code. It also clarifies the continued prohibition on the sale of cats and the requirements for the display of shelter or rescue animals by host pet shops, institutes a new permit fee for pet shops that wish to sell dogs, and clarifies the penalties for violations of Title VII, including instituting a uniform penalty for violations in which the permit is free or costs $0.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2024-14 be adopted.
Would Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Council President, Piedmont Smith, like to make an initial statement?
Yes, I actually have a set of seven slides to go through here to present ordinance So, a little background here, we were contacted several years ago about inhumane conditions in puppy mills and kitten mills are not as common, but they also exist, and we were contacted by local animal rights advocates, as well as the U.S. Humane Association, or Humane Society, to try to restrict the sale of dogs and cats at pet shops because it was very difficult to make sure that they were not coming from puppy mills. So, that concern coupled with the fact that we have a lot of dogs and cats at our animal shelter and various dog rescue groups led us to propose ordinance 2145 banning the sale of cats and dogs at pet shops. That was co-sponsored by myself, a former councilmember, Susan Sandberg, and councilmember Dave Rallo. So, we did ban the sale, and the state, the General Assembly this year passed House Enrolled Act 1412, which overrode our local code, saying we cannot ban the sale of dogs. So, we need to change our legislation in order to conform with state code. So, and here is one of the dogs up for adoption, by the way, at the animal shelter. So, I'll just go through section by section here. First of all, we are adding to our local code that people should refer to Indiana code to make sure they comply with all of the animal regulations there. There were more regulations for the protection of animals that were added through the House Enrolled Act 1412 this year. Section 2 of our ordinance adds a requirement to post the name and address of a breeder on the kennel of dogs at pet shops. So, if people want to do their due diligence and make sure that the dog doesn't come from a disreputable breeder, they can do that. Then, we have Section 3, which reinstates the consumer protection requirements that we took out with ordinance 2145. So, these are some rules about, you know, record of vaccinations in veterinary care and humane treatment of the animals before and while they are on sale, for sale. It incorporates new state code language also for consumer protection. Here's a kitty cat that is waiting to be adopted at the shelter. Section 4 deletes the ban on sale of dogs. As I said, we have to conform with state code, but we maintain our ban on the sale of cats. Section 5 clarifies that pet shops may still display dogs and cats for adoption, you know, by shelters or rescue organizations, as long as the pet shop itself doesn't financially benefit from those adoptions. And I volunteer at Petco, so every week you can find me there taking care of the cats that come from the Brown County Animal Shelter that need a good home. Sorry, that's a little personal aside. Section 6 and 7 set a new commercial animal establishment permit for pet shops that sell dogs, so their permitting fee will be $750 a year. The permit comes with an inspection process. For shops that do not sell dogs, it's $250. And then, we also clarify that a non-municipal animal shelter or sanctuary does not have to pay this fee. Then, next slide, please. We have some revisions to the penalties section of the code. We removed the penalty for sale of dogs, of course, since we're now allowing the sale of dogs. And we do establish penalties, this was kind of an oversight previously, some permit fees are zero because it is a nonprofit or something that is running the, the rescue or whatever animal establishment, and so their fee is zero, so any penalties were times zero, because often the penalty is like twice what the fee is. So, we fixed that in the code as well. So, I believe that's it. This is just an adorable photo I found online, this is not. At the animal shelter where there is segregation between cats and dogs. But I'm open to questions, and I also want to welcome Councilmember Rallo if he wants to add anything.
I think you handled all the main points. That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, was there anyone from the staff that might have wanted to add anything from administration staff?
I don't know. Is there anybody from the administration here?
We do have Virgil Sauter, who's the director of the Animal Care and Control Division, and I believe one of our assistant attorneys from the legal department, in case there are questions, Alex Pratt. I'm not sure if either of those folks would like to say anything, but they're here on Zoom.
Yeah, I would invite either of those individuals to make any additional comments right now, and then be available to answer questions along with Councilmember Piedmont Smith when the question time comes in a minute.
Hello, I'm Virgil Sauter, the Director of Animal Care and Control. I want to thank Isabel Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rallo, and as well as the council staff for putting this together in a time when we are seeing record numbers of dogs entering the shelters nationwide. It is upsetting that we had to move to bring back this ordinance, but this will definitely allow us to ensure proper care of animals while they are in the pet store. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will entertain questions from council members, for either city administration staff or councilmember sponsors, Piedmont Smith and Rallo. Seeing no questions from council members, would anyone from the public like to make a comment on this item of legislation? Seeing no public comment, we'll come back to council for final comments. Oh, yes, Mr. Lucas, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Not that I see, but if there are folks online that would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host. And I see no immediate takers.
Thank you, Councilmember Stossburg, for that reminder. Any final comments at this time from council members on this item? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to thank Virgil Sauter, the Animal Care and Control Commission, and especially Deputy Council Administrator Attorney Ash Kulak for all of their help in crafting this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other final comments? I'm ready to call the question. Clerk, please call.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossburg?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Legislation passes 8-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ruff. We'll move on to the next item.
I move that Resolution 2024-13 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Resolution 2024-13 authorizing the allocation of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Program Fund for the year 2024 and related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution brings forward the recommendations of the 2024 Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee. The principal task of the committee is to recommend funding for local social services agency proposals that best meet program criteria and best meet the needs of the community. This resolution allocates a total of $359,996.38 to 30 different agency programs. The resolution also approves the funding agreements with these agencies, accepts the report of the committee, and authorizes the chair of the committee to resolve any questions regarding the interpretation of the agreements.
I move Resolution 2024-13 be adopted.
Second.
Second. Thank you. And the chair of this committee is not able to be with us tonight, Councilmember Asari, so Councilmember Stossburg, is that right, that you're going to be presenting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I also just put a few highlights up there. Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for putting those in. The Jack Hopkins overview, there were 39 total funding requests totaling over $618,000, and so the committee had to narrow that down to, I'll say roughly, that $350,000 that was allocated for 2024. You can see the committee members listed there. We had three community members, Nordia McNish, Cameron Greer, and Eddie Rue, and I just want to send a huge thank you out to them because this was a lot of work to read all of these applications and have some meetings and some hard discussions, and it was wonderful that those community members stepped up to be on the committee. And then, the council members on the committee were Councilmember Asari, Daley, Ruff, and myself. We had six meetings total. Our first organizational meeting was on February 29. I would say, generally speaking, we got started a little bit late this year because of significant council turnover, and that was one of the things in our debrief, to encourage the Jack Hopkins Committee of next year to start a little earlier. And then, we had our initial review of applications, our agency presentations, pre-allocation, and then allocation, and then a debrief at the end. If we can go to the next page. So, at that initial reviewing of applications, we met and looked at the basic eligibility criteria for Jack Hopkins, and there were two agency requests that we deemed did not meet that basic criteria. One was located outside of the city limits, and the other one was proposing projects that would be put on properties that were not owned by the organization, and that is one of the requirements of Jack Hopkins for infrastructure upgrades. And the remaining 37 agencies were invited to give presentations, and then after those presentations, individual members, we kind of had a worksheet that we had to fill out, and individually, we had to allocate that $350,000 and turn in our individual allocations to council staff. It was kind of like homework, and I just love a good homework assignment personally. And then, council staff averaged those. And then, in our pre-allocation meeting, we went through them, starting with the highest percentage average. So, basically, we looked at the organizations where there was wide agreement amongst the committee members that we wanted to fund those, and so we started there and then kind of went down the list. And when we were doing partial allocation requests, we tried to look deliberately at the requests of the agency to make sure that we were giving them a partial amount that made sense in terms of their overall request. And the resulting recommendation allocates $359,996.38 to 30 different agencies for their projects. This goes over that $350,000 by just a little bit. We have been told by the administration that that extra, almost $10,000, that there is that in the fund, and that they are willing to, to have an additional allocation ordinance later in the year if that is necessary, if all of the agencies turn in receipts for 100% of their funds. And if we go to the next slide, I don't know if you can read this from afar, there we go, that's just the full list, as is in our packet for the agencies, how much their grant was, and then what they're using it for. And I also want to reference back to Councilmember Rosenbarger's initial statement about the HPC and Amethyst House, because Amethyst House is also on this list, also for those windows. And one of the things that we changed, because this issue with the Amethyst House windows also really concerned me, because of course, they could replace more windows than they can repair with the same amount of dollars. And so, we made sure to put a note in their, in their usage that they were allowed to use that money to either repair or replace, if there is some way to talk with the HPC about allowing a replacement instead of... a replacement instead of simply a repair. And then, more windows could potentially get done for that organization. Does anybody have any questions for me? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I guess I could crawl on myself. I don't know.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, I had to leave the room for a moment, but were there any collaborative applications? And could you describe those? Because we tried to encourage that in recent years.
Yes. So, there were three collaborative applications. I realize that I don't have all of my stuff from that in front of me. One was, the one that we awarded was Stone Belt for, and there were several, I think, different organizations kind of collaborating. They have an annual job fair, essentially, right? It was a job fair. And so, we awarded money for that. The other two, one of them was a collaboration between Beacon and Continental. And we did not like, as a committee, that Continental is a for-profit business. And so, they work with Beacon to do housing. And so, it was kind of one of those worthy projects, but with limited funds and a lot more requests than funds, we decided that that did not raise to a priority. And then, the third one was Bloomington Food Council. What was the technical name? Somebody help me out, because...
Looking for it.
Thank you. And that was a collaboration with Tandem. And that just ended up, when we evaluated that, as I said, in terms of the process of all of us giving our individual allocations, it didn't rise to the top for very many participants. And it was a high cost for few people would benefit from it overall for a high cost. And that was the conclusion with that one.
And the Stone Belt was a collaboration with whom?
Mr. Lucas, do you have that full list in front of you that has the agency list? They... Or I could get out my...
It's probably in the resolution.
I know. I'm old school. I have things on paper. I know. You can all laugh at that. Oh, it doesn't actually say it on this paper.
Stone Belt was primarily partnering with the Down Syndrome Family Connection, but their application listed Monroe County Community School Corporation, I think Bean Blossom School Corporation, and some other groups that worked with them on the Jabapalooza Career Fair that they are putting on.
Thank you. Glad to hear about those applications. Are there any other questions for Councilmember Stossberg or any other committee members? Seeing none, we can go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2024-13, the Jack Hopkins Social Service Funding allocations? Please come to the podium and sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes. And if you are joining us via Zoom, then please raise your hand in Zoom. Or if that doesn't work, you can send a comment to the meeting host that you would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Carol Canfield, lifelong member of this community. And I have appeared here for at least 20 years while this has been decided each year. I would love to be able to support all options with what they're asking for, but they're an organization that kills children and provides money for children to be killed. So, I can't support them. Same with Planned Parenthood. They've been killing children for years. And so, I cannot support that either. I don't want my tax dollars going for this. So, I would urge you, please don't pass this with those two organizations. They kill children. Thank you.
Is there anybody on Zoom who has their hand raised? No? All right. Next person here in council chambers. Is there anybody else?
My name is Scott Tibbs, and I have been lobbying you for 25 years in opposition to funding for Planned Parenthood. And I am now twice as old as I was the first time I sent a letter to the City Council opposing this funding. Before I address specifics, I want to address the broader picture. Planned Parenthood, which merged with other branches in multiple states, admits in its application that it has taken in $74 million this fiscal year. That multi-state Planned Parenthood is, of course, part of a multinational corporation that has consistently brought in over $1 billion annually. PP simply has no need for this money from city government, as there is plenty of money floating around the Planned Parenthood organization to pay for the programs in Bloomington. Local government could and should instead donate to truly local charities who could actually benefit from the limited dollars available to local government. For Planned Parenthood to seek a grant from city government would be like Donald Trump asking me to give him a personal gift. Planned Parenthood, while they no longer terminate unborn babies at their South College facility, does shunt women to neighboring states to have their babies killed. While the Hopkins grant does not directly contribute to this abomination, it is nonetheless offensive to many taxpayers to be subsidizing an organization that proudly facilitates the extermination of innocent human lives at the most vulnerable state of life. Finally, I object to the use of tax money for gender-affirming hormones. In Genesis 1:27, Scripture tells us that God created male and female.
Mr. Tibbs, that item is next on our agenda? It's not right now?
It's part of their funding application.
Who's funding application?
Planned Parenthood's funding application.
Is that right? Yes, okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
And both are made in His image. The modern transgender cult defaces the image of God with needlessly medically unnecessary surgeries and artificial hormones that disrupt the body's natural hormonal balance. What gender-confused people need is not government financing this confusion, but loving care to help them accept their bodies. Sadly, the mega corporations that make up Big Pharma are making money with this, so it will continue. There is no reason for the City Council to fund this with local tax dollars. No doubt, people will threaten us with suicides in response to opposing this funding. It is actually a common tactic for abusers to threaten self-murder in order to keep the abused partner in line or to prevent her from leaving. I do not accept this gaslighting, nor should it like the city leaders. Again, the proper response is compassionate care to confirm the sex, not gender, that a gender-confused person's body shows. Please vote this down and come back with a funding package that does not include yet another grant to subsidize a billion-dollar multinational corporation that kills innocent babies and preys on vulnerable, gender-confused people. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody online at this point? All right. Is there anybody else here in council chambers who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll come back to council members for final comments. Any comments on Resolution 2024-13? Councilmember Zulik?
Just to be clear, the Jack Hopkins Fund is funding local branches of all options in Planned Parenthood, and since abortion is illegal in the state of Indiana, does not fund abortion. Far be it from us to tell people what they can and can't do with their bodies in any case.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. First, just wanted to thank my colleagues who put all the work and effort into reviewing applications and making these always difficult decisions. Second, I just wanted to use this opportunity to reiterate, as we have in other settings recently, that I think we should be exploring the possibility of combining Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee with other similar application processes within the city to make things easier and augment the impact and just lower the load or the lift for local organizations. I think there's interest in maybe doing that in next year's budget, so that would be terrific. And then, also, just with respect to the public comments we heard, I think, while I disagree personally, but they're also contradicting established city policy. Thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Just in terms of process of Jack Hopkins, I also want to mention, for those of you who don't know, the Jack Hopkins grant is different from some other grants in that these organizations won't just get a check handed to them for whatever amount it is that they asked for. They have to submit receipts to, the Hand Department actually is the one that helps us manage those. So, they have to submit receipts to the Hand Department, and then the Hand Department has to check to make sure that what is on those receipts is what is on the allocation list. So, if they are submitting a receipt for something that is not on the approved list of things that that organization can spend that money on, then they will not get the reimbursement for said money. So, the only things that these organizations can spend this money on are the things that are specifically listed on that allocation worksheet. So, that is just a point of information for community members and also for council members, because there are quite a few new council members up here, too, that this is the first time that we're approving this. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right. I think we're ready for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 2024-13?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that resolution is adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
I move that Resolution 2024-14 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Resolution 2024-14, to protect individuals seeking gender-affirming care. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Daley and Councilmember Flaherty and comes forward on the recommendation of the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission. The resolution acknowledges the importance of access to gender-affirming health care and notes that such access has come under recent threat. The resolution adopts a gender-affirming health care policy to be followed by city personnel. I move Resolution 2024-14 be adopted.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and this is cosponsored by Councilmembers Daley and Flaherty. Do one of you have a presentation? Councilmember Daley, please go ahead.
There we go. Thank you. I'm kind of kicking myself that I don't have slides. I'm sorry. So, to give you some background on this resolution, in April of 2023, Governor Holcomb signed into law SB 480, which was passed by the Indiana General Assembly. This bill prohibits physicians from providing gender-affirming or procedures to minors, effectively banning Indiana youth from transitioning. It was set to become law on July 1st of that year, but the ACLU brought a class action lawsuit and received a temporary injunction, putting on hold this law until the case went to trial. However, the state appealed, and on February 27th of this year, the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals stayed the injunction. That means that Senate Bill 480 went into effect the very next day, on February 28th of this year. No care could begin, and none could be continued. Minors who were currently receiving medical care needed to immediately find health care out of state or discontinue their health care altogether. So, the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission, in response, passed a resolution on gender-affirming care and passed it along to the council, asking us to support this and to recommend their resolution. According to the Human Rights Campaign, as of May 2024, 39% or 117,600 trans youth aged 13 to 17 are living in the 25 states that have passed bans on gender-affirming care. They state, "In a coordinated push led by national anti-LGBTQ+ hate groups, legislators across the country have overridden the recommendations of the American medical establishment and introduced hundreds of bills that targeted transgender, non-binary, and gender-expansive youth's access to age-appropriate, medically necessary care." Transgender youth are being erased. Access to gender-affirming care can literally be life-saving. Our children, all children, deserve a place to feel safe. As it is, transgender school kids can't necessarily feel safe in their own classrooms. The Indiana General Assembly is making sure of that. Indiana House Bill 1608 requires that teachers report their students wishing to use another name than what is on record. This is a dangerous and vindictive practice for students who don't feel safe coming out in their own homes. My husband spent the past two years as a theater arts high school teacher. He was required to deadname multiple students who were still exploring new identities, and this broke his heart. He wanted to be welcoming to all of his students, especially his most vulnerable ones, so he had to compromise. He made it known that he would call students by their last names instead. He could never really get to truly know the real them while he was their teacher. Our communities should not have to skirt such an important issue, such as a basic issue, as identity. Social affirmation is a large part of affirming care for young people. The simple act of acknowledging and affirming a transgender or non-binary person's identity is enormously important. According to the Trevor Project's 2019 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health, 54% of transgender and non-binary youth reported seriously considering suicide in the last year, and 29% made a suicide attempt. But access to hormone therapy, hormone blockers, binders, et cetera, has proven to significantly reduce the risk of suicide in transgender youth ages 13 to 20. The JAMA Network, a group of 13 peer-reviewed journals published by the American Medical Association, tells us this. "Transgender and non-binary youths are disproportionately burdened by poor mental health outcomes owing to decreased social support and increased stigma and discrimination." And that receipt of gender-affirming care, including puberty blockers and gender-affirming hormones, was associated with 60% lower odds of moderate or severe depression and 73% lower odds of suicidality over a 12-month follow-up. So, this resolution upholds the City of Bloomington's commitment to nondiscrimination based on sex, gender, and sexual orientation, as laid out in Bloomington City Ordinance 2.23.110. It also aligns with the vision statement of our city's comprehensive plan, where the first core principle enumerated is to "fortify our strong commitment to equality, acceptance, openness, and public engagement." So, I hope this evening that you will vote yes on Resolution 20414 and continue to uphold our city's reputation for being a welcoming and safe space and confirming Bloomington's inclusiveness and acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, do you want to add anything as cosponsor?
Yeah, I think I'd actually like to turn it over to the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission Chair, Ryan Chade, and then possibly still reserve comments after Mr. Chade speaks, if that's okay.
Okay.
To change the order.
Good evening, council members. And this is a great day for the trans community. And this evening, I would like to give you a brief history of the amazing support that the City of Bloomington has given to the LGBTQ-plus members of our community over nearly the past 50 years. And also, a little brief synopsis about how we got here. In 1975, this body passed Ordinance 7567 by a vote of 5-0. This ordinance guaranteed civil rights for Bloomington citizens regardless of sexual orientation, marital status, or age. It was one of a very few, it was one of a few, rather, first to do so in the entire country, based on sexual orientation. In fact, only a few dozen other cities in the entire country had passed a similar resolution by a year later. Naturally, the state of Indiana stepped in and decided that a local commission, like the BHRC, had too much independent authority, and in 1978, we lost the ability to investigate sexual orientation discrimination. In 1993, Ordinance 9328 sought to rectify that misdeed by the state, much as we are attempting to do here today. This ordinance passed 9-0, and it once again guaranteed equal opportunity regardless of sexual orientation. A lesbian nurse who spoke in favor of the ordinance at the public hearing stated, "Medicine and democracy are a lot alike, and equal rights must be guaranteed to everyone." Also, only a symbolic gesture, much as this ordinance, it was a meaningful expression of support. In fact, respondents voluntarily cooperated with all three complaints... expression of support. In fact, respondents voluntarily cooperated with all three complaints of sexual orientation discrimination filed with the commission in that first year. While protecting against gender identity discrimination for transgender residents was briefly discussed, the BHRC commissioners did not offer, did not opt to include those protections in the 1993 resolution, meaning we chose not to do the right thing then at an amazing time to do so. Nearly 20 years ago, in 2006, Mr. Ruff and Mr. Rollo, you sat on this very body that unanimously passed Ordinance 0607, which forbade discrimination based on gender identity. The BHRC had been discussing adding gender identity as a protected class and doing legal research on how to accomplish it since 2004. In your comments that evening, Mr. Ruff, you stated, "This ordinance did not protect behavior, but protected people from the behavior of others, from intolerance and civility, exclusiveness, and discrimination," just as this ordinance attempts to do so today. You concluded that to not adopt this ordinance would protect the behavior of intolerance and discrimination. And, Mr. Rollo, you stated that this ordinance...
To clarify, that remarks should be addressed to the chair. It's okay to talk about the remarks that someone made, but rather than saying directly at...
Sure.
You, just, yeah, sorry, thank you so much.
Mr. Rollo stated that this ordinance harms no one and hoped that it would help to advance fundamental civil rights, and hoped that the debate had worked to advance tolerance for our community. While today's ordinance focuses a lot on health care, adequate health care is a fundamental right. No one should be discriminated against for obtaining quality health care. That is a right for them. According to NPR, gender-affirming care for minors and adults is supported by all major U.S. medical and mental health associations. Finally, another instance of this body's support, and one of the latest in 2015, Ordinance 1528 was unanimously passed. The council and the mayor wanted to extend full protection to the categories of sexual orientation and gender identity, thereby removing the voluntary nature of investigation and mediation of complaints based on those categories, helping to absolve the state's derelict for these communities once more, right here in our own community. That year, it was stated by Mr. Rollo that the ordinance was historic, and he was looking forward to the day that we lived in a community free from prejudice and discrimination. Councilmembers, today you have a chance to once again make historic progress for Bloomington. As I have pointed out, Bloomington has a long history of being on the right side of history. I don't expect today's outcome to be any different. The Bloomington Human Rights Commission was approached in May of 2023 by a member of the transgender community, London Montgomery, in the wake of anti-transgender health care laws being passed throughout the U.S. Throughout many discussions with our commission, London patiently weaved the process of helping us mold our resolution, which is substantially similar to the one before you this evening, into one that both the commission and our liaisons in the city's legal department were comfortable giving to both this body and the office of the mayor. This resolution is also very similar to Resolution Number 230385, passed by councilmembers of Kansas City, Missouri, by a vote of 11 to 1, excuse me, merely three days after the Missouri State legislator passed their bills that criminalized access to gender-affirming health care across the state of Missouri in 2023. As you can see, and while, as Councilmember Daley stated, it didn't come into effect until February of this year, we are behind. The Indiana General Assembly passed Senate Bill 480 in early 2023, and that banned gender-affirming health care for transgender and gender-diverse minors. We were careful to weave through the intricacies of what this ordinance would entail for members of the transgender community, and how to best protect them in the place that they live. This group of passionate advocates helped the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission bring this very important resolution in front of you today. Today, you will hopefully vote yes, as you have in the past, to be on the right side of history, as this body has done time and time again. We thank you for your support and look forward to your passing of Resolution 2414. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chade. Mr. Flaherty, do you have any follow-up?
Thank you. I want to steal Mr. Chade's thunder and the excellent recitation of the history in Bloomington going back 50 years. I wanted to echo the comments of my colleague, Councilmember Daley, and thank her for her work on this as well. And just note some specifics, actually, from city policy. So she referenced Bloomington Municipal Code 2.23.110, where it is established policy of the city not to discriminate in the provision or implementation of programs and services on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, housing status, or status as a veteran. Among other things, the Human Rights Commission is empowered to investigate discrimination and hate crimes, as we just heard, for discrimination on the basis of any of those characteristics, report on findings, and also may prepare educational programs designed to emphasize and remedy the denial of equal opportunity because of a person's, among other things, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity, and the harmful effects of such a denial, and its incompatibility with the principles of equality. I also wanted to note that in 2020, we passed a resolution denouncing and condemning white nationalism and white supremacy. And in part of that resolution, we, I think, cited the value of intersectional justice here in Bloomington, noting whereas that in documented in the City of Bloomington Comprehensive Plan, "Our community welcomes all. There is a multiplicity of nationalities, races, cultures, ethnicities, religions, abilities, ages, sexual orientations, gender identities, and economic statuses. We derive our strength from this diversity, which we celebrate and embrace, and commit to ensuring the inequities of the past are not a part of our future." I also wanted to talk a little bit about, a few additional details about timelines. I think, again, my colleague, Mr. Chade, did a good job explaining the context of Senate Bill 480 and the path that it is currently on, including its legal challenge, you know, still pending. Also wanted to note that the Community Advisory and Public Safety, another commission, advisory commission of the cities, passed a resolution in November of 2023, as noted in the resolution, calling for the city to declare itself a safe haven for transgender youth and adopt a policy consistent with that. In terms of the council's interaction, on March 22nd, we received an email from the Community and Family Resources Department, and Michael Schermus, the liaison to the Human Rights Commission, explicitly asking that the council consider taking up the resolution or a version of it and adopting it. Councilmembers Daley and I expressed an interest in carrying this forward. In the following months, we met with local residents to help move this forward. We corresponded with the Human Rights Commission, a variety of city staff, and other local stakeholders, including the Stonewall Democrats of South Central Indiana. Altogether, this was a more than two-and-a-half-month process, building on a process that started in May of 2023, last year. We actually explored trying to do more with this resolution than it does. We worked with city staff, and again, in consultation with folks who helped develop this resolution, to explore possibilities of improved employment practices, a review of city health care policies, including the possibility of supporting out-of-state travel as necessary for employees and their families to access the needed care, for instance, partnering with or encouraging local employers and associations to do the same, offering financial supports for community groups or nonprofits to support the transgender community in some of these ways. These were ultimately not included in the resolution, but it was a productive conversation, I believe, with the administration to date. I think they are very supportive. In fact, we received a letter from Mayor Thompson earlier today, supporting this resolution. And I guess I see it as, I share that to note that this is a step forward, but it's just that, it's a step. It's building on work that's already been done, and already identifies a policy of nondiscrimination on the basis of gender identity in Bloomington, and that we need to take more steps after this. In terms of scheduling, I think it's, we were considering the balance of all interests, the importance of honoring the hard work and very long road that has brought us here, and then ultimately also rely on the guidance of our council president, who we collectively charge with managing the council's schedule. In speaking with the council president, it was her view that when legislation is ready, per the sponsor's view, and it fits in the schedule, that it should be heard. And that is why it is scheduled this evening. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers for the sponsors of the legislation? None? All right, well, then we will go to public comment. Is there, if there's anybody in the public who would like to comment, you can line up at the podium, and when you get to the front of the podium, be sure to sign in, and then state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. Mr. Lucas, would you like to make an announcement reminding folks on Zoom how to participate?
Yes, if there are folks joining via Zoom that would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand, or send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar by clicking on the Reactions tab or the More tab. And again, if you can't locate that, please send a message to the host.
All right, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is London Montgomery. My pronouns are she/her, and it is a joy to be here tonight to celebrate the resolution to protect individuals seeking gender-affirming care. I believe it is very easy to become disengaged and resigned to fear, and instead, you have made the joyful choice to stand up and celebrate justice, change, and hope, all of which begins at home. Addressing a concern in last night's addendum, which believes that the resolution has been fast-tracked, I encourage the council to celebrate our city's Human Rights Commission, who in a 7-0 unanimous vote, agreed to present this resolution for adoption on January 22nd, 2024, 141 days ago. The addendum includes concerns over the validity of WPATH, an organization whose guidelines ensured I was able to receive life-saving care. As in the addendum quote, "are strong supporters of the LGBTQ community and fully supports transgender people and acknowledge they can lead happy and fulfilling lives," thank you. I encourage the council to celebrate the following statement by the HRC, "Gender-affirming care has always existed and isn't a new phenomenon. People who begin transition during childhood, who work closely with parents and health care providers to determine which changes are age-appropriate and are in the best interest of the child." And that every single major medical organization, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and the American Psychiatric Association, supports the provisioning of age-appropriate, gender-affirming care. The addendum suggests we cannot trust reports on transgender youth's suicide because the sample sizes are too small. I would like to make the council aware of two reports. First, the Trevor Project, as previously stated, in 2024, 49% of young transgender individuals seriously considered suicide in the past year. One in seven attempted suicide. Over 18,000 LGBTQ individuals responded. Second, the 2022 U.S. transgender survey, with a sample size of 92,329 transgender people in the United States, which shows that over 97% of those surveyed are satisfied, and very satisfied, with their gender-affirmation surgery and hormone replacement therapy, and the council may count me as one of them. Finally, I encourage everyone here to celebrate the city council's history of standing on the right side of justice. In 2017, your city council passed Resolution 1713, whereas in Americans deserve health care that enables their children to grow into their full potential. Section 1 states, "The Bloomington City Council opposes any and all attacks on our health benefits." That resolution passed unanimously. At last week's Fourth Street Festival, I saw many artists and patrons, and I was reminded of tonight's resolution, and that it is for and by the people that live here, of all ages and identities, and that Bloomington, at its most beautiful, is a celebration. Tonight is a celebration.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom, Mr. Lucas? Nope? Okay, next person here in chambers? Please be sure to sign in, and you'll have, and state your name, you'll have up to three minutes. If you wouldn't mind putting that sign-in sheet to the table, to your right, that way people can sign in beforehand, and we can roll along a little more efficiently.
Hi, my name's Rick Nagy, and I want to rise to commend the council for bringing this resolution, and hopefully appeal to those who might still have misgivings about it, if there are. What's going on in this country and in this state should be familiar to anyone with even a glancing knowledge of history. An authoritarian regime needs a scapegoat, an object of derision to focus people's hate, an object to distract from what's really going on, a will to power that eventually takes away all our rights, once they have a foothold. They pick a group, small enough to bully, but large enough to be visible, and one that is misunderstood so that lies and conspiracies are easy to spread about them. The question we have to ask ourselves is this: Do we give in to the conspiracy mongers and hate purveyors, as they would ask us to believe the lie that there's an uncaring cabal of doctors out to groom kids, handing out hormones like M&Ms to any kid who walks in and asks for it? No parental involvement, no question, no counseling, no follow-up? Or do you believe, as many of us have no doubt stated about reproductive rights, that medical decisions are best made between a family and a doctor? Are we naive enough to believe that a set of laws designed not to protect kids, that's only their transparent cover story, is not part of an all-out assault on our rights, marching to the tune of, "But think about the children"? Whether you want to call it theocracy or authoritarianism, I would call it fascism, protecting kids is not their ultimate goal. This community likes to think of itself as a bubble, but here's a couple of things about bubbles. They are fragile, and they can be burst from within and from without. Hopefully, this resolution will have a practical effect, but will absolutely have a moral effect. And if that moral effect results in no more than knowing that good people will always make a stand against hate and ignorance and bigotry, that good people will always make a stand for the rights of both individuals and communities, and that good people are willing to make that stand against what seems like overwhelming odds, then it's a victory, because the forces of hate will know they can't succeed, as long as we have the courage to make that stand. I strongly urge all members of this council to support this resolution and be a voice on behalf of those in our communities whose voices are being actively silenced. Thank you.
All right, next person here in chambers?
Hi, my name is Deb Pardue. I'm a mental health provider and business owner in Bloomington, Indiana, and so I came to speak on some of the inaccuracies that I was reading in some articles that were put out by some of the council people. So I just want to address some of those. So, the whole nature versus nurture debate was solved, like, in the 50s and 70s with John Hopkins Research, when they were providing gender transition surgeries on infants. They encouraged parents to complete transition surgeries prior to the age of two, because if you raised a child in a said identity, then that child will grow up and be fine. Like, the child will assimilate, and they will be okay in the raised, in the raised gender. In 1979, they stopped performing those surgeries, because what they found out is identity is not a nurture thing. Identity is a natural thing that is formed in ourselves. And so you can't raise a child in a specific gender identity and have them be okay with it. Identity is housed within us, and we have to understand what that is for ourselves. And so, that was stopped, because part of the people that had the surgeries, a huge portion of the people that had the surgeries, ended up committing suicide, because they felt like they were housed in the wrong bodies. And so they didn't get to tell people who they were, it was decided for them, and they were not correct. And so that was not very helpful for them. No surgeries are happening on anyone under the age of 18 in Indiana and in the country. I don't know where this is coming from, it's just not happening. You have to be 18 years or older to get surgeries for gender-affirming care in everywhere that I know in our country. And to get those, you have to have one to two letters from mental health providers at a master's level, which I am at, and one at a PhD or MD level. And so I studied under Dr. Rex Stockton at IU, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but at IU in the Counseling and Psychology Department. And so I reached PhD candidacy, and I assure you, I've read hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of peer-reviewed articles on this topic, because my dissertation that I had started was over clinical readiness for clinicians like myself to help transgender people and their families. And so, no surgeries are happening, I promise. The government is saying that parents are not educated enough to make decisions for their children. I don't know about you, but if everybody else has the right to make decisions for their children with their medical providers, why are transgender parents less educated and able to make those kinds of decisions? I don't find that that is appropriate. And definitely, IU and the articles that I read, I promise you, are top-level, peer-reviewed articles with not biased subjects. When you think about it, you can't really do lifelong, you can't do studies on children, it's unethical, especially when you're talking...
That's your time.
Sorry.
Thanks. Next person here in council chambers?
Hello, my name is Beth Clausen. I want to thank everybody for listening to us and understanding the need for this resolution. I want to thank everybody for listening to us and understanding the need for this resolution. I am here as a member of the community, but also as a mother of a trans child, and I will try to keep my tears at bay, but can't promise anything. I just wanted to share with you the effect this law has had on my family. We have been navigating life with a transgender child for the past eight years. It's been relatively easy for the first six years, but for the last two years, we have been defending our child's right to play sports with her friends, talk about herself at school, and most devastatingly, receive life-saving, gender-affirming care. This life of fighting is what my family has become used to, a life of constantly feeling the need to defend ourselves, our choices, our child, and her right to live fully as her true self in every aspect of her life. This constant fight state has taken a toll on our family. My daughter is always listening for cues in the way people are talking to make sure that they are safe for her to trust. My other children do the same, cutting off, cutting out those from their lives that do, that they do not feel support their siblings' happiness. My husband and I are always on the defensive, feeling like we have to prove ourselves to doctors, legislators, and other parents that we are doing the right thing, that we have jumped through the right and proper hoops. I am not a mental health care professional, but I imagine that those present will agree that this is not a healthy way to live. My family is so used to defending ourselves out in the world that the defensiveness has appeared in our own house. We work not to lash out at each other at home, the only place all of us should feel safe, I'm sorry, the one place all of us should feel safe. Just the act of speaking at this hearing about a positive resolution, I feel the need to defend our family. It's a really hard habit to shake. Logistically, the gender-affirming ban has been a burden for our family as well. We can no longer speak to any of our daughter's doctors about anything involving gender-affirming care. I have taken large swaths of time off of work to reach out to doctors out of state to make appointments, to get her medical records into my hands, and then transfer them myself to the doctor's office out of state and make travel plans and reservations. My husband and I have taken, have to take off work to travel to her appointments, and will have to do so at least twice a year for the foreseeable future. We have been fortunate enough to be able to get our daughter out of state to continue with her transition and begin puberty with her peers. As she, her doctors, and we, her parents, work together to figure out what is best for her, let me tell you, it has been life-changing to watch this, but also, she's being forced into a closet now that she has never had to be in before, and it hurts her a lot. It hurts us to see that. She shouldn't feel shame for knowing herself so well, yet I fear that is exactly what is happening. Thank you to all of you for understanding the importance of passing this resolution. Thank you for letting the Bloomington community know that you stand with our transgender members-
That's your time.
...and their loved ones, and will do your best to protect their rights. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, is there anybody online? Still not? Okay, next person here in council chambers?
Hi, my name is Christina Giles Vaquet. I'm a transgender woman, experience, woman of experience, transgender experience, anyway. Anyway, the reason I'm talking today, I don't like talking in public, it's not my strong point or anything. The reason I'm talking today is there's a lot of, lot of problems that hormone replacement therapy can solve, that are outside of the regular, the regular public knowledge. Like, everyone assumes that hormone replacement therapy is only for people that have like body dysmorphia and dysphoria, which is gender dysphoria, but I think, there actually should be more research on, this is a whole other, for a whole other government body, but there should be more research on whether it actually can help on a biological level. Because, I, I, I'll tell a short bit of my, my life. I had a mental breakdown when I was in my twenties, well, teenagers and twenties, and I've had, I've had a really rough, rough time of my mental health, and it only began to weighing when, when a certain chemical in my body called testosterone started to leave me when I got older. When I finally figured out what was going on with my system, I applied for gender-affirming care, and I've been more stable than I've ever been. So I just, I don't, I just want to say that regardless of people's convictions on this, this issue on any front, it does not serve the community to destabilize people that otherwise would be okay members of the community, because if I was destabilized, I could easily see entering legal justice system, and that's not, and I know exactly how bad that is for transgender people in this state and other states as well. So I'd rather, I'd rather this, this, because this documentation is not just for minors, like it's a safe haven for minor, minor, it's also, it's also going to affect adults, because that's their end game of these people, is to go after us transgender adults. I'm 40 years old, and I really would rather not, not have to change my entire life back again, but there's no way, there's no going back, in other words. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of interesting things about, about, that one lady's up here was talking about, intersex, intersex, which is, which means people that are born with, with partial gender of different, different body parts, different parts of gender, how they used to treat kids, when they would just decide for them, against them, and stuff, and that didn't work out very well, and it still doesn't work out very well, they continue to do that, but it's actually a very common scenario, it's actually, as common as red hair. So, these people sometimes transition, sometimes they don't, but they're, they're a part of the communities that need, that need to be recognized, their rights need to be recognized, and, and ironically, all the laws they're trying to pass are trying to prevent these, the laws they're trying to pass, they're not thinking with their heads, in other words. So, I just want to make that clear, and I would want to thank the council for voting on this, and I appreciate it. Bye.
All right, next person here in chambers, and please be sure to sign in.
Hello, my name is Lilith Roberts, and I am a 15-year-old trans woman who has been on HRT for about 11 months. I am the leader of an LGBTQ club at Bloomington High School South, and I would like to consider myself a social activist. As soon as I knew that transgender people existed, I knew that I was one. Since then, I have always wanted to hormonally transition, a sentiment only intensified by the passing of Senate Bill 480, and my lack of affirming health care led to being more and more intimate with suicidal ideation. Since starting HRT, I haven't thought about harming myself, ever. Kids will die. Kids will die, and passing this is a step towards preventing that. To address something said earlier, I am not threatening suicide, I am showing what drove me to consider it: gender dysphoria. The city of Bloomington has, on principle, greater problems that they are put up against than what I see as the bullying of at-risk teenagers. To enforce Senate Bill 480 and any future bill similar to it on the same level as a society-established crime would be unnecessary and immoral. Gender is an inalienable human right, and it is simply wrong to deprive people of their own right to identity and expression of that identity. One of the parts of this Senate bill is that healthcare professionals can't tell their patients that out-of-state options exist. This would be like telling a carpenter that they are welcome to be a carpenter, but that they have to purchase their tools out of state, and tool shops that used to be in business are no longer allowed to tell their customers that come in that there are other places. So after months of work, you get a permit to drive to Michigan and take your tools back to your shop. Sure, you can be a carpenter, but it makes your life incredibly difficult, and actually impossible if you were unaware of your options. For this reason, this resolution must be passed, as I see it as a step towards preventing, sorry, supporting the heavily marginalized group of transgender youth. I have a tough position as I speak here. A little over a week ago, I posted on social media an announcement to, and it reached around 60 people, but not one of them reached out to me. I wanted, I, I put it out with the goal of having people come speak at this. Many people liked it. Many people liked the post, but no one was willing to come and talk. Now, this is an issue because I have to represent my peers. I have to represent my peers that are too scared to come talk at this, and I see that as a really, really bad position for the board to be in. There are many people who knowingly or not depend on you to make the right decision here, and far be it for council to tell people what to do with their bodies. Before I go, I would like to ask, would you really look at me like you would the worst criminals in Monroe County? Thank you.
All right, next person here in council chambers, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Sharp, and for those of you who do not know me, I, I'm a trans woman. I started hormones as a minor, and I originally testified against SB 480 whenever it was in front of the House Committee attesting to how life-giving these hormones are for people like me. I cannot begin to describe the devastation felt by our community in the wake of these anti-trans bills passing and becoming law. The resolution before you today is one of hope, hope that we can be ourselves without the fear of the state coming after us. It will give us peace of mind. We know that these people aren't stopping with the kids, they're going after transgender adults too, and this resolution protects us too, and it protects us protecting each other, and it reinforces the community, the community that we so desperately need, especially in this hour. We are facing a movement that has admitted they want to eradicate us from public life entirely, and now that's a quote. I say, I'm not going anywhere, and I implore you to join us on the right side of history and support our community through this onslaught of hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, I'll check back with you about any Zoom people. Nope? No Zoom participants? Okay, next person in chambers, please.
Good evening, my name is Liliana Young. I am a resident of Bloomington for nearly a decade, and I am proudly the matriarch of the Sisterhood of Bloomington, a group of trans women. We're living in an age where the majority of this state's legislative body wrote themselves a blank check to dictate how a small and vulnerable group of people can and cannot live their lives, up to and including decisions of health care, whether for individuals or family. This is nothing short of overreach. It does not matter your political affiliation. It is wrong. The resolution before this council is a way to fight against that where possible, and for that reason alone is why it should pass, because it is your moral obligation as our local governing body to fight against such overreach and uplift and defend the most vulnerable members of your community. You should pass this resolution simply because it is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Next person here in chambers?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jennifer Crossley, and I wear many, many different hats in this community, but the role that I am the most proudest of is the role of being a mom, one of the shortest, fiercest mama bears you'll ever meet. I am a mom to a proud and out queer teenager, and that teenager also has lots of trans friends who, as previous speaker said, cannot be here tonight because of fear, because of retaliation, because of those that are in their particular families that don't even believe in who they are. And in a community in which we tout progressivism, and in a community in which we, you know, talk about this, this blue bubble that we continue to mention, wouldn't this be the greatest thing that we continue to do, to be on the right side of history of all month's Pride Month, where we are supposed to be celebrating our LGBTQ plus siblings? Wouldn't this be the greatest thing that we could do right now to go ahead and pass this resolution? As we all love our resolutions, and we all love to talk about many different things in this community, this right here is a defining moment where we can really say on the things and stand 10 toes down on the things that we ran for, and put that to use with your vote tonight. So as a mom, as an ally, I ask all nine of, or actually, eight of you, I can count, all eight of you that are here, that are present tonight, as the people who have continued to come forth, as some that are friends, that are here, who have poured out their hearts to you, and have taken time from their particular families to come and talk to you and say, please pass this resolution. I urge you, as a community resident, as many other different hats, but again, as those who cannot stand here before you to speak on behalf to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person here in council chambers?
Hi, my name is Samuel Udak. As a deputy chair and on behalf of the Monroe County Democratic Party, I am strongly urging all council members to vote in support of this resolution. As members of the Democratic Party, MCDP supports the position of President Biden and Democrats across the country. The decisions about gender-affirming care for trans youth belong squarely with healthcare professionals, parents, and their children. Laws preventing access to this life-saving care stand in conflict with nondiscrimination obligations, as established by the Equal Protections and Due Process Clauses of the 14th Amendment, as well as federal statutes, including the Affordable Care Act, Title IX, Education Amendments of 1972, Omnibus Crime Control and Safe Streets Act of 1968, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and the ADA. Further, the insinuation that skyrocketing suicide rates among young people since 2020 are being used as a political cudgel, rather than an alarm to the crisis they so clearly represent, is appalling. A systematic and rigorous peer-reviewed study, previously referenced by Councilwoman Daly, published in the Journal of Adolescent Health in 2020, demonstrated that bi- and transgender youth were two to two and a half times more likely to experience depressive symptoms and consider suicide. Among almost every marginal group in American society, they found increased rates of suicidal ideation and attempts at suicide. As an example, they found 25% of black, non-binary, and transgender youth had attempted suicide already, and frankly, you're going to be confronted with a staggering cascade of statistics about this. There's 20-plus years of peer-reviewed, well-vetted systemic research demonstrating that it is an increased mental health risk to deny self-affirming and gender-affirming care specifically to young people. Gender-affirming care, in concert with affirming spaces and communities, are unequivocally, unequivocally life-saving resources. And frankly, of all the voices you've heard tonight, and you will hear as this debate continues on, those we must most carefully listen to are the ones that have already fallen silent. And speaking as a private citizen, and as a 32-year-old adult queer man who found the courage to come out four days ago, it's a little unbelievable that we're even having a conversation about anybody abstaining from this, opposing it, or anything in between. Speaking as a private citizen who is a resident in the heart of District 4, I am forced to question what constituency the council members opposing this resolution believe they're even representing. My city and my county and my community affirm our moral obligation to one core responsibility: protect trans kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in council chambers?
Hi, my name is Ames Dobbins, and I am the founder and owner of the Support Local Queers T-Shirt Project.
Could you please pull the mic down a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
I'm Ames Dobbins, and I am the owner and founder of the Support Local Queers T-Shirt Project. I've been doing it for seven years within the community here in Bloomington and the greater Indianapolis area. I am an advocate for LGBTQ youth, and I have been since I was a youth myself. I don't really know what I planned to say when I came up here, but I walked from my house, just down the street from City Hall here, to be able to speak with you guys. I guess I would like to lead with a personal anecdote. When I was a youth in Indiana, I was not given gender-affirming care, because of people telling me constantly, "You don't know yet, you don't know that you're ready," constantly telling me, "It's too expensive, it's something that you shouldn't be focusing on as a child." And hearing that at 16 years old really changed my life in a way that I would never be able to comprehend until I was dealing with the PTSD later in life, constantly meeting people telling me, "You don't know who you are." And I think that's extremely rude and disrespectful, because we do know who we are, and we're just asking for some support. I think one of the biggest reasons why I'm speaking today is because I remember what it was like to be that young child contemplating suicide, and it wasn't me being trans, it was the lack of support. One of the biggest things we can do is show support through legislation, because it shows the small child that's watching the TV screen or watching the news that there are people out there that care about them. That's what this means. I've, I've lived in and out of Bloomington for 10 years. It is so important for me to be here, even as a trans adult, because this is the only place in Indiana where I feel safe. So I urge you to pass this resolution, because it would create a lot more sense of safety here in Bloomington, and for those of you who are considering abstaining or voting against the resolution, I would like to tell you that we would probably see you as somebody who would not be safe to be around. And that really, really comes down to it is, we want to be safe around our community members, we want to be safe around the adults that are responsible for making, unfortunately responsible for making the decisions for our children. responsible for making the decisions for our children. You know, I don't have a child myself, but like I said, I'm 28, and about 10 years ago, I was sitting, I would imagine myself sitting in this room just watching and not even saying anything. So thank you for letting my voice be heard, and I really, really, really urge you to pass this resolution.
Thank you. Next speaker here in council chambers, and please be sure everybody to sign in.
Good night, folks. My name is Nordea McNish. I did not plan on speaking in any way, any regards. I'm kind of accidentally here on purpose. I am a clinician by profession, and I actually work with teens and children. Most of them, if not, you know, a whole section of them are kids who struggle with their identity. All right? And it's hard to find safe spaces. They have expressed that it's hard to find safe spaces. What I've noticed is parents try their best to do what they can to support their children. Some of these are even withdrawing them from the public to have them home schooled. Does that create safe space? Yes, for them in some way, but emotionally, mentally, socially, otherwise, those things go, you know, in decline because they're not getting that socialization that would help support them in terms of being confident in who they are and who they feel they are. So I have to work with these children and teens. So children mean in between the ages of 10 and 13. Teens, 13 to 18. I run both groups in terms of, as a clinician. And these kids are really out there trying to be themselves but be accepted anywhere, everywhere, because home sometimes is not even the safest place for them to be. So if you're able to support getting them to a place where they know safety is here in this community, then I feel like that is a plus in terms of how you can support them because they need it so much. And like I said, I was just here on a whim, accidentally on purpose, but because I was so moved to speak because I saw the validity in a lot of people that are here, and I saw that there's a reason and a good reason and have to learn in more and see. I didn't even know about the, you know, to tell you the truth, I didn't know about this exact purpose tonight, but I felt like I was here for a reason. I got here accidentally and was sitting upstairs, and so I implore you to do the right thing in terms of supporting lives, because that's what it is, lives. And when I say clinician in mental suicide ideation, self-harm behavior, those are real. Why? Because of identity, because of the struggle to fit in, feel accepted, feel comfortable in who they are. And you can be a part of supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. One more check for anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. In council chambers. Next person in council chambers, please.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bolden, and I'm here in a personal capacity rather than in my normal work capacity, which is why I'm over here. I'm not here on a whim, very much here on purpose, and, but first, I need to read a statement from one of my friends who could not attend, and I will not take up the full time, I promise. But she said, Senator Shelley Yoder asked that I read this for her, and she said, "Gender-affirming health care is a life, is lifesaving health care. I urge all council members to stand with our transgender residents and declare that they are valued and welcome members of our community who deserve the dignity of access to all necessary health care. We know that our transgender youth tragically have higher rates of depression and suicide, and that access to affirming care is a lifesaver for them. National organizations such as the American Medical Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics recognize the positive mental health outcomes for youth who receive supportive care and have written best practices for providing valuable services. We must protect the rights of parents, youth, and their doctors to make medical decisions with well-established scientifically-backed guidance without interference from politicians. Bloomington has a long history of being welcoming and treating people better than the state legislature, and I urge our counselors to vote tonight to uphold that history by supporting the resolution." And that is the conclusion of Senator Yoder's statement. From a personal level, I reached out to some council members. I really, truly appreciate the time you took to have a discussion with me, and I urge all of you to support this resolution. It is so very, very important. And as a parent, as a member of this community, as a member of the LGBTQ plus same-gender-loving community, I know how important it is to live in a community where our elected officials actually speak up in support of who we are. And I really appreciate the fact that you're not making us prove our humanity over and over again. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person here in council chambers.
Dear council members, what I'm about to say, I do so with respect for the council. I am first and foremost accountable to a holy God who demands I speak truth, so that is what I will do. Our country is operating under false notions that other countries around the world have realized we're wrong and have backed down from. We need to stop lying to people and forcing others to lie and act accordingly. Our children are being targeted by those who would take parental authority away from them, just as they did with abortions. You can manipulate language to dehumanize an unborn child and skirt around your parents and go through a judge. You can make a proclamation that separates our town from the rest of the state, but it's still wrong. Affirming care denies science, which every high school student knows or is used to, that a man has XY chromosomes and a woman has XX. DNA is present in every cell. You can fool yourself thinking you're the sex you're not just because you're taking hormones and chopping off your genitals, but the DNA does not change. All of your cells know you are male or female as God designed them. Suicide rates. The suicide rate for those considering transgendering is actually less than 1%. The post-trans rate is 40 times higher. The trans person may be happy immediately after transitioning, but when looking down the road, that is no longer the case. We need to stop lying about the number of sexes. There are two: male and female. We need to do away with the emperor's new clothes and acknowledge that truth. God created male and female. University distinguished service professor of psychiatry at Johns Hopkins Med School for 40 years, Paul McHugh, has studied those who transitioned and found the practice of sex-change surgery to bring no important benefits. He also mentions...
Please, no outbursts. Let everybody have their turn.
Thank you. He also mentions that the most thorough follow-up sex-reassigned people extending over 30 years and conducted in Sweden, where the culture is strongly supportive of the transgendered, documents their lifelong mental unrest. Studies overwhelmingly show that children who did not act on impulses to trans went through their teen years eventually outgrew those impulses by 80%. How many of us know teens and can say they are acting on emotions and not thinking down the road? How many of us remember being those teens with any issue? All of us, to be sure. Let's speak truth and get real help for these children, not fake help that harms them. The best solution is not creating a safe space, but to tell them the truth, tell all the truth, and stop this nonsense. Let's stop catering to the delusion.
That is your time.
Thank you.
Next person here in council chambers.
My name is Jean Smith. I'm 72 years old. I've been a business owner in Bloomington for 49 years. Tonight, I've been shivering in here. Last night, I was shivering in anger. It's kind of, it was an interesting experience. I did it for about three hours, and I thought, I've never done this before, I've never shaken this way, you know? And it felt like shivering. Anyway, thanks for this, you guys. I really appreciate all the shivering. The council put out, some members put out something on the agenda that I, I lobbied today about, and I believe they'd like to take it down, and I think they should, and I'll talk about that here a little bit more at the end. I want to object to what I felt was their, their main thing, and it basically was saying, well, kids, if they get this surgery, they're going to regret it. And, you know, we aren't really talking about surgery for kids, but what I want to talk about is what that message sends, what it's like to live in a closet like I did for 55 years, from the 1952 through all those times when we didn't have the internet. And I heard things like that. I saw movies where we were the villains, and, and I felt totally alone in the world. And kids hear this stuff, you know? Kids you don't even know are trans hear this stuff, kids who are trans. And it's hurtful, harmful, scars people for life. I think about why people probably commit suicide, and I figure it's fear and self-hate. And I can tell you that these words from politicians, this little game we've got going on of woke and anti-woke, is scarring people for life every time it's done. And so I was going to say this to the end, but I really would like this council to take that damn fake journalism out of this document, of this meeting, if those, if those council members are willing to take that down. If you read Erin in the Morning, a blogger on these sorts of issues, you'll see that it was trash journalism, and for this city to do this really reflects poorly on our community and Democrats in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to speak? Yes, welcome.
I'm terribly embarrassed because Ames and I are apparently wearing the same thing. My name is Melanie Davis. I have the pleasure of knowing many of you, and I'm a mom, I'm an intersex woman, and somebody with a deep understanding of this issue. Firstly, I want to thank the parents and the community members who have voiced their support and in individual conversations on this issue. We talk publicly and privately. When I was a really young person, growing up, wondering how I could live in this world that reviled people like me, this degree of acceptance wasn't imaginable. Not even my parents could understand or fathom what was going on with me, but they knew that it had to be suppressed. So they did, out of concern and love for me and ignorance of the issue that's still going on today. That was in the late 70s and the early 80s, but as they say, we've come a long way, baby. And then, just as we are starting to see positive change in life conditions for trans youth, when we saw kids supported more and more to be themselves, this pops up in the states across the country, backlash. Trans folks were caught up in manufactured culture war for something that affects a population that, sorry, that fears the queer. They have no experience with this issue. That makes it easy for bad actors to muddy the waters with disinformation to create fear and panic in parents and grandparents and cash in on this topic as protecting the children. This preys on the anxieties we all have about our kids. Because of how I was born, I feared that my own child would be born intersex. Not because of shame I might have, but because we are, we are made to be shamed for it. How would she live her life? How would she be accepted or not by others? Will she be physically okay? Will she be happy? Will she know love? Will she know peace? How can I keep my baby safe from the madness of this world? Sorry. For those tasked with the public safety, that anxiety extends to every child. Within the LGBTIQ community, these children are our children, too. We were them, and watching them suffer needlessly is unbearable. When our voices, stories, and actual scientific evidence is drowned out by a well-developed and backed media campaign, a lot of falsehoods masquerading as truth, designed to confuse and misdirect earnest concerns but unfamiliarized people succeed in that design. Parsing all of it is difficult. Thank you for listening to our community.
That is your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next person here in council chambers, please come up.
My name is Timothy Gay, and I wanted to speak about my family. My partner of 20-some years is a transgender woman, and my brother, who I've known my entire life because I'm the oldest of four, is a transgender man. And the childhood that we went through involved a lot of, a lot of religious persecution, a lot of religious abuse, and I believe it spent, I believe it kept my brother from being who he was and living a happy and full life until our parents were gone. That's another, that's another part of living through this or living in this is that my mom passed, my dad passed, my father-in-law passed, and they all got appropriate medical care. One had cancer, he got appropriate medical care. One had dementia, he got appropriate medical care. And my mother had COVID, and she got appropriate medical care, and they all died. And I don't want the rest of my life to be loss. I don't want the rest of my life to be anxiety. I don't want to constantly have to defend my family's right to be who they are and to live, just to exist in their basic form without someone else trying to control who they are and trying to destroy those things, the best parts of who they are. My life right now is that stress. My brother lives in another state that doesn't respect his rights. My wife lives in this state that doesn't respect her rights. I'm tired of loss. I'm tired of, I'm tired of losing, and everyone has a right to health care. And I don't understand why it's such a difficult, why it's such a difficult thing for everyone to get on the same page with. Because whenever other people in the chamber go to their health care providers, they expect to speak directly to their health care provider and get the care that they need, and then these same people, some of them, would believe that the type of care that a qualified doctor is going to give to somebody who is transgender is not valid. That's not for them to say, that's for science, that's for medicine. We need to stop loss, and I would encourage you to pass this. Thank you.
All right. I see one more person in council chambers. Please come up. Everybody be sure to sign in if you haven't already.
My name is Daisy Din. I just want to say thank you to everyone else who spoke today. I just want to share my experience a little bit. I've lived in Indiana my entire life. I've lived in Bloomington for a third of my life, and Bloomington is a place that I've been able to become myself and, you know, receive care. I see a doctor in Bloomington who prescribes my hormones. I had gender-affirming surgery at the hospital in Bloomington. I have people in this town that supported me through my journey and are here today. And in, in so many ways, I love this city and this state, but it's not perfect, and, you know, anything that we can do to protect people like me and particularly children... children who have experiences like me, I think is super important. I think about the, the possibility of if tomorrow at work, no one was able to call me by my name, if I wasn't able to get my hormones, um, it would cause distress beyond what I can imagine. And I think about the experience that those children have had and will have in the future. And, um, yeah, anything that we can do as a city to protect those kids from having that experience, um, you know, the, people have cited sources, and if you don't want to listen to the sources that are cited, um, the experience that, um, I and others have shared, uh, I, I hope that that, that influences you a little bit. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to give a public comment? Mr. Lucas, anybody online? No. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we will come back to council members for council member comments. Is there any council members who would like to comment on this resolution? Councilmember Daly.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that I'm blown away by the vulnerability that I saw in this room tonight, and, um, thank you for everybody who spoke in favor of this resolution and for sharing your stories with us and letting us feel closer to you and getting to see the real yous. I see you and I hear you. And thank you to everybody who's helped work on bringing this resolution here tonight, too. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Zuluk?
I guess I will just say, as someone who turned 18 in the last four years, I can confirm that it is not some magical age where you magically know who you are or don't know who you are. Plenty of adults have no idea, and plenty of six-year-olds are rock solid and will be for their whole life. And far be it from us to be able to tell individual people who they are and who they can't be. So I'm really looking forward to supporting this resolution. Thanks.
Any other council members care to comment? Councilmember Stossberg.
Thank you. I also want to start by thanking everybody who made themselves vulnerable here tonight and who spoke from the heart about themselves and their identity. Um, and I kind of want to call a few people out, but I don't think that I will, and hopefully you kind of know who you are. Um, I think that it takes bravery to stand up and be vulnerable, and a lot of people really stood up and were vulnerable. Secondly, uh, I guess I am going to call out a few things. Uh, one is, I, I will always stand by an individual's right to choose their own medical care. It really doesn't matter to me what that care is. It is their business in conjunction with a medical professional and whatever support person that individual wants to have in the room. It doesn't matter whether or not I agree with it, whether or not I would make the same choice. It's not my right to choose whatever that is, and that includes gender-affirming care. Secondly, I want to hold up that, you know, a lot of, a lot of what was said, like negatively in general about the concept of gender-affirming care has to do with, um, hormones or surgery or any of those big scary things. Well, you know what? It's not all about hormones and surgery. A big piece of it is about accepting somebody for who it is that they want to be, who it is that they want to be, how they want to dress, how they want to do their hair, what they like, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that all of those are pieces of gender-affirming care as well that are under attack by these bills. It's not all about that, that medical piece. Some of it is about those soft social presentation pieces that are also incredibly, incredibly important. Um, and lastly, I, I want to speak as a parent. Um, I have a 13-year-old and a 16-year-old, and I just want to remind people out there who are, who are, who have forgotten or who are wondering, uh, first of all, it's really hard to be a parent. Okay? And let's also remember that it's really incredibly hard to be a teenager. It is hard to be a kid. You are, you are discovering all kinds of things all the time. And, you know, people want to say like, oh, their identity is just going to be a phase, it's just going to be, well, maybe, but maybe it's not. And as a parent, you don't know what is going to be a phase, what is going to be a stage, and what is going to be the thing that sticks. And your job as a parent, then, is to support your kid while they are within that stage and be by their side as they journey through that stage. And maybe at some point, they'll go, you know, I, I've changed my mind, I, I don't think that this is really who I am, I think I'm someone different. And then you have to support them through that, too. But they, as, uh, Councilmember Zuluk said, you know, six-year-olds, sometimes they know. They might never decide to change. They know exactly who they are. And as a parent, you, you have to go with that, and you have to support that. And so I really, really applaud the parents out there who are supporting their kids, be who they are. And it is not easy, but it is incredibly important, and you guys are doing really, really important, important work, and it is not easy. So I am very pleased to support this, this resolution tonight, and, um, I think that that is all. Thank you.
Any other council members like to comment? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I want to say thank you all for being here tonight. It was, um, just really wonderful to hear stories, and, um, I just, in a way, I want to like apologize for potentially folks thinking this might not pass tonight. Like, I hate to even, like, have people feel that or think that, even though, of course, we never know what might happen up here. On like a big scale, general level, like in 2019, I ran for council because, uh, there was like a study done that just says so many people who live in this county don't feel welcome here. And like, on a city level, that we have plans, you know, and goals and values that say that should never be the case, and on a personal level, I would just say like, it's heartbreaking to feel like you don't belong where you live, either by choice or by, um, because you have older people taking care of you. So I think it is just really important that we, as a body, can do whatever we can do, big, little, and in-between, to make everyone feel welcome here, and, um, especially in this evil state that we happen to live in. So thank you for coming here and supporting this. And as Ms. London said in the very beginning, this can be a celebration, and it hopefully will be a celebration. So thank you for starting with that.
Any other council members like to comment? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. First, thank you to Mr. Shaday for the reminder of the council resolution, uh, adding transgender people as a protected class within our human rights ordinance back in 2006 was definitely the right thing to do. And I want to say how much I appreciate everyone coming tonight and, and speaking. I know it's very difficult for some people. And I want to thank those who were kind enough to meet with me in the past few days. I have a, something written, so I'll read it. As strong supporters of the LGBTQ community and equal rights for everyone, and having repeatedly taken positions consistently against discrimination, we, Councilmember Ruff and I, took the topic of the resolution very seriously. In reviewing the current landscape of gender-affirming care, we became aware of significant high-profile debates and policy changes, mostly occurring in Europe. Europe has been restricting support for minor transition due to several controversies there, including the closure of the largest gender transition facility, Tavistock, Great Britain, due to a series of whistleblowers coming forward. The National Health Service commissioned a report on care for children, and due to that report and other information, one report I included in the packet addendum, they decided to abandon chemical and surgical treatment of minors, deeming it unsafe. The procedure is still legal in England, but not supported by national healthcare. Recognizing how extremely important the implications of these issues are, especially as they pertain to minors, and how thoroughly complex the issues are with the highest level of due diligence being demanded in taking up a city resolution on gender-affirming care that includes minors and promotes the use of such methods as puberty blockers and surgeries, we requested that the sponsors of the resolution take Resolution 202414 off of fast track to allow more time for us to investigate. These developments are real, and they deserve serious attention. We did not receive more time. The memo in the packet addendum is the, um, is the alternative we were left with to explain some of our concerns and provide information and reference materials from, that were used in Europe, that illustrate what is occurring there and why we were, had some reluctance at this point to vote yes or no without more information and investigation. Quite simply, more time is required to get a better understanding of the controversies associated policy changes and the most current scientific information regarding minors and certain types of gender-affirming care. The resolution draft was reviewed by City Legal, and their approved version was made available to council members just three days before it appeared in the packet. This fast-tracking has placed us in a nearly impossible position for adequately processing conflicting and contradictory evidence about gender-affirming care, also known as gender transitioning, which involves puberty blockers, in the case of children and adolescents across sex hormones and surgeries. Sadly, politicization of the topic of gender-affirming care is extensive. This has created an environment where asking questions and examining data is denounced and the question are often maligned. This is a terrible situation for medical science to operate in. Debate and discussion are essential for understanding any type of, topic of inquiry, especially one that is so consequential. We fully support the bodily autonomy of adults and their right to undergo hormonal treatment surgeries with informed consent, the foundation of medical ethics. Children cannot legally provide informed consent. Their parents or legal guardians must grant consent. Furthermore, with respect to gender-affirming care, children lack the cognitive development to understand the implications of potential sterility. However, we find there is substantial debate on the risks and hazards of chemical, hormonal, and surgical treatments involved in gender transitioning for children, and whether children are provided opportunity to assent to, or dissent to such procedures. We found that this matter of informed consent of parents and children, um, assent of children to life-altering changes, data discrepancies, lack of longitudinal studies, systemic review, and questions of whether key organizations tasked with developing the standards of care were actually following them. That was the basis of the charge, uh, that changed policy in Norway, Finland, Sweden, and England. Note that unlike many states in the U.S. where such care is banned outright, this has not been the case in Europe. They have not banned it. They have instituted a much more careful approach, but they haven't banned gender transitioning of minors. Besides the research and the latest policy changes in Europe, we sought out with limited time, members of the LGBTQ community and experts in gender-affirming care. We certainly want to affirm success stories. Trans members of the community who are happier and fulfilled and grateful that they were able to access the gender-affirming care that they needed. Instead of a careful discussion on the matter, the state imposed a ban on gender-affirming care for those under 18. This is excessively harsh and severe, and it doesn't address the needs of those who truly need, need transition care, while not addressing those who may need other types of care that was mentioned this evening, counseling, therapy, other support first. Instead of trying to make the standard of care in word indeed better, they opted to prohibit the care altogether. I oppose this and further attempts to criminalize care for the trans community. I remain in a difficult position since I have always supported the transgender community, but I wish that we follow the highest standards of care when it comes to minors experiencing dysphoria. The same organization that recommends the standard of care in England that was abandoned recommends that care in the U.S. So that said, I take issue with one particular organization referred to in the where section of the resolution, WPATH. Their own discussions leaked by whistleblowers call into question the standards of care that they profess, profess to advise and follow, not my words, theirs. I also take issue with the direction the state has taken, that is punitive, and seems on the road to criminalizing gender-affirming care. What is needed is a thorough review of information that has come to light in the past two years by our medical establishment so that best practices are followed, not outright banning. I'm in no position to argue with the AMA or the American Pediatric Association and so forth. That is their position, and I honor that. I was quite disappointed by the fast-tracking of this topic. It's very important to have time to investigate, with many implications for bodily autonomy, matters of consent, life-altering medical treatment, the assent of minors, discrimination of marginalized community members, and many more. I don't wish the staff of our city to participate in any criminalization of residents who are doing the best they can with the procedures that are available, and I met with some of them, and I respect what they've gone through. It's been very difficult for them, and many of them have had wonderful outcomes, and I want that to continue. I hold certain institutions vested with proper science-based care responsible. They need to look at the standards of care and make sure they, they follow up on the science. I will be supporting this resolution because I care about the members of our community, and, uh, I don't wish any discrimination against them by the state. But I think that we need to take closer looks, a closer look when it comes to children's care, and I hope that happens in the future. So, thank you.
Any other council members want to comment? Any who have not commented so far? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. So just want to ask my colleagues again for their support of the resolution and to thank our Human Rights Commission and the mayor for their leadership and support as well. This resolution is about non-discrimination and about loving and supporting our LGBTQ-plus neighbors, and especially transgender residents and transgender youth who are under attack from many fronts, including our state government. As I said earlier, this resolution builds on and adds depth to existing city policies supporting our transgender community. It establishes as the policy of the city not only non-discrimination, but affirmation of gender-affirm, gender-affirming care and lifesaving care. It supports agency and bodily autonomy and the ability for transgender residents and their families to make private healthcare decisions as they see fit in consultation with their healthcare providers. And with all respect to my colleague and the remarks he just made, I think that's maybe the, where we see things fundamentally differently. Regardless of the details or discussions going on in the medical field, this is about autonomy and agency and private healthcare decisions. And so, that's largely immaterial, in my view. Briefly, again, as I noted in the introduction, this has been in motion for 13 months. It came to the council in March of this year, and to all, to all of my colleagues, everybody received that email, the unanimous resolution from the Human Rights Commission. We were asked explicitly to take this up. Some of us did. You know, uh, one of my colleagues, uh, who I believe shared or joined in those comments is also on council leadership, who is charged with scheduling and getting this item on the agenda. Uh, we ultimately defer to the president. I think just the, the characterization of this as fast-tracking is, is just factually wrong. Also briefly, and with due respect to my colleagues, I don't want to dwell on this, but I do feel the need to express my disappointment in the insistence by two council members and the allowance by our council president, who, you know, ultimately didn't really, it wasn't even really clear who had authority to do this, but the choice to use the council packet as a place for filing opposition materials, and in particular, the specific materials in this case, I object to, but to the best of my knowledge and from talking to staff theirs as well, this was a, a significant departure from council norms. I think it did cause harm in our community, and I think there's no shortage of other opportunities in appropriate fora for elected officials to share their views, including print materials. That's just not what the council packet is or has been used for. Regarding some of those resources specifically that are cited to justify this kind of uncertainty, it doesn't take a lot of digging to identify that those are, are coming from hate groups, uh, you know? I dug into it, I spent hours digging into all that, and it's, I can go deep on that with anybody who wants to, but I, again, disappointed that that went out in informal council, um, materials. Finally, um, just a heartfelt thank you to the community members who spoke tonight, resoundingly in support of this resolution and this step forward for our community, especially to London and Liliana for their collaboration on this, and echoing Councilmember Rosenbarger and nodding to London, I will also joyfully be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Um, I guess, I guess I'm the only one. Oh, no, Councilmember Ruff, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Piedmont Smith, I wasn't going to say anything, but comments of one of my fellow council members sort of forced me into position to say a few things. It's ironic, a few months ago, I brought forward a resolution regarding a giant water diversion proposal in northern Indiana that was to affect a lot of communities there, and I received objections at four, between 3:00 and 4:30 or 5:00 p.m. on the day of the hearing of that resolution. That day was the first I heard objections from fellow council members, from community leaders. That resolution ended up voluntarily. I ended up voluntarily delaying that, postponing that resolution for several weeks. Out of what I will quote at the meeting, I can be quoted, found saying, "Out of respect for my colleagues, we requested more time to study and learn about this issue." In dramatic contrast to the way this played out, in spite of what council, my council colleagues, some of them have said, at least one of them has said, the legal department did not issue their final analysis or opinion on the resolution that we heard tonight till the Wednesday, last Wednesday, a week ago. Some of us have other jobs that have kept us extremely busy, and six days is nowhere near time to do the due diligence and actually meet and discuss with the people that I wanted to meet and discuss this issue with. For example, there was a couple in town, a man and woman. Woman is a physician in the community. Husband is a psychologist. They have a child who has transitioned, and they agreed to meet with me and talk with me, and Councilmember Rallo, actually, at my home. And I contacted them last week. They were traveling, could not meet until last night, so I spent two and a half hours, we spent two and a half hours discussing their journey, the journey that they had and the journey their child had, transitioning. Very informative, very moving, just exactly the kind of information I wanted to have the opportunity to talk to folks about, but did not have anywhere near the time. Jean Smith, who is here tonight, who has spoken and who's been a leader statewide in the community. I believe when we talked today, she informed me that she wasn't even aware of this until just the other day, this whole resolution. An indication that this, to not call this fast-tracked, I have served, Councilmember Rallo and I, between the two of us, have served on this council for almost 42 years. That's significantly more than every other member of this council put together twice. So, believe me when I say, I've worked on a lot of resolutions with a lot of collaboration across a lot of councils, and just saying that the council sponsor thinks it's ready to go, and therefore it should just, we should just move ahead with it, rather than dedicating and respecting the desire for other council members to do due diligence and do the outreach they want to do. That's not the council, the process that I've experienced over 20 years serving, in terms of collaborating, to reach as much agreement and make as many people as possibly proud and happy to get on board with something as possible. One more quick example. So I heard from several individuals that there are no surgeries, no gender-affirming surgeries done in this country on people under the age of 18. Zero. None does not happen ever. Zero. My brother is a surgeon of 37 years, a general surgeon, so I thought, and I didn't think of this until late in the game, so I called him up, and he said, "That's just not a true statement. That's not a true statement. Maybe he's wrong. I don't know." I didn't really have the time to further explore, just to really know whether these are issues or not, and to explore, why were the European countries making some changes in the way they handle gender-affirming care with minors? It was just simply an effort to really take this seriously and understand. And no. Now, I am happily and proudly going to support this tonight. It's obviously extremely important, and what the state is doing, what states are doing all across this country is wrong, just morally wrong and dangerous and harmful. And I'm glad, as one of my fellow council members said, that Mr. Shadé reminded us that this council, for decades, has stood for, proudly stood with, and supported the LGBTQ-plus community in words and deeds, and we will do that again tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I was honestly not going to say anything. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will just say that I am very, very grateful for everybody who was brave enough to speak tonight about their own experiences and those of their families. You show a lot more courage than the Indiana General Assembly, which is guided by fear and bills that somebody else has written and told them to pass. And, and so I'm just very grateful for you all speaking tonight. And there's somebody who's very close to me, who I love very much, who is a transgender male, and I feel passionately that I love who he is, and I feel, even though he is very young, he knows who he is. Parents make medical decisions for their children all the time. There are a lot of treatments for serious diseases that have negative impacts as well as positive impacts, and parents have to discuss with their children and have to discuss with their medical providers what is the best decision. The state should not interfere with that. On the charge of fast-tracking legislation, I just disagree. I do not think this was fast-tracked. Resolutions are generally brought to us the same night as when we vote on them. There's always an option for council members to make a motion to postpone, which I have not heard tonight. We have all known about the Human Rights Commission's work since March, so I will be very happy to vote in favor of this resolution. Are there any second bites at the apple?
I'd like to take a quick second bite at the apple.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Just for the record, I want it to be understood that I cannot speak for Councilmember Rallo, but I made very clear request of sponsors to slow down and give us additional time in it before the packet went out, and that is much better than gathering people in this room expecting to have the discussion and hear the legislation and then tell them that we're not going to actually do it, we're going to postpone it. So there was a deliberate decision not to do it here and now, because it would be better to ask for the additional time earlier.
Any other second round comments from council members? Councilmember Stossberg?
I've just been sitting here fuming for just a few minutes at this point, because one of the things under attack right now are parents, and I feel personally offended at the idea that I can't make medical decisions for my child because I might not have my child's best interest at heart. And I didn't talk about that before. I mean, as people mentioned when they commented, this particular resolution is not specifically targeting minors. It's targeting care for all transgender people and the right to existence for all transgender people, not just minors. Okay? But we have bigger problems if we're not going to trust parents to make good decisions for their children. Okay? And in fact, we have whole departments that if parents are found to not be making decisions in their children's best interest, there are specific interventions for that. And by and large, parents are making decisions with their children's best interest at heart, and it really is personally offensive to assume that because your child is receiving gender-affirming care, that suddenly you aren't making good decisions for them in that respect, and it really is just personally offensive. So as a parent of teenagers, it's incredibly personally offensive, and it's just reminding me of all the other ways that parents have been attacked over the years for not making good medical decisions for their children. Anybody remember the whole "we're over-medicating our kids for ADHD" moments? Okay? Maybe that's aging me. All right? And in fact, there has been ridiculously undiagnosed ADHD, especially in women and girls, and that's totally an aside, but we need to trust parents, and we need to trust that parents know what is best for their children. And that is what this piece of legislation at the state just really, it's just really extremely offensive. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, just to be clear, the organization I was speaking about deprived parents of the information that they needed or admitted by the doctors or the clinicians that parents were not aware of the implications. Thank you.
Other second round comments? All right. I think we're ready to call the question to take a vote on Resolution, I have to scroll back up, 2024-14. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
A thousand times yes.
Yes, yay!
Daily?
Oh, yes.
You're killing me. Flaherty?
Yes.
Anzulik?
Joyfully, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the second period of public comments on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to make a comment at this time, please come to the podium. You will have up to three minutes, and don't forget to sign in. Mr. Lucas, would you like to make the announcement for people who may still be lingering on Zoom?
Yes, if they are close to you and want to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom or send a chat to the host. And while we are waiting on that, I do have one written comment here from Sam Dove, which he asked me to read. The comment is, "Join us for an unforgettable Juneteenth celebration in the city of Bloomington. Date, Saturday, June 15th, 2024. Time, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Location, Switchyard Park Pavilion. Enjoy a day filled with food, fun, music, and community spirit. This free event features delicious barbecue from the barbecue train and a variety of exciting activities while supplies last. Students from Bloomington North High School will be offering free activities, including face painting. We will also have the unveiling of the Underground Railroad sign. A special thank you to our presenting sponsor, the South Central Community Action Program. Don't miss out on this amazing celebration. We can't wait to see you there." And I see no other takers on Zoom.
All right. And I don't see anybody in council chambers wishing to comment at this time, so we will move on to matters of council schedule. And here we have a proposal from the Special Committee on Council Processes to replace some regular sessions with consensus-building activities in the period after our council summer recess. And I need to bring up my memo. Okay. So hopefully you all had a chance to look at the memo that went out in a packet addendum yesterday to explain the discussion we had with the Special Committee on Council Processes. We talked about the limits of Robert's Rules of Order and how the, our regular sessions were very highly structured and didn't allow for back-and-forth conversations on matters of community interest, and that we wanted to try some council sessions that were structured as more loosely and as consensus-building activities, which is something that Councilmember Asare brought forward to us and championed in our meetings. So the proposal is to change the following meetings from regular sessions to consensus-building activity sessions, Wednesday, August 14th, Wednesday, September 11th, and Wednesday, November 13th. So I will make that motion. And there's been a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Stossberg?
Are those going to be moved to a different room as well?
We will try to move them to a room that's more conducive for discussion, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor, please say yeah. Say aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We will do that, and we will keep you posted on the structure of those sessions, and anybody interested in talking with myself and Councilmember Asare about how to actually organize those sessions, I would welcome that conversation. Other matters of council schedule, we do have the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee will meet at noon tomorrow in council chambers. We have a meeting of the Special Committee on Council Processes next Monday, the 17th, at 6:00 p.m., and our next regular session is next Tuesday, because Wednesday is Juneteenth. It's a holiday, so we're having our session, our regular session, next Tuesday, June 18th, at 6:30. Have I missed anything, Mr. Lucas?
Just one quick correction. The Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee is meeting in the Allison Room tomorrow, not chambers.
Okay. Thank you. Allison Conference.
Thank you for the other reminders.
And where is the Special Committee on Council Processes meeting?
The Kelly Conference Room was the only room available, so that's down the hall. It's the smaller room at the end of the hall.
Kelly Conference Room, Monday at 6:00. All right. Well, I think that's it. Thank you all very much, and we are adjourned.